Good evening. The time now is 7:26. I'd like to reconvene the City Council Successor Agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Call to the order. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Nguyen.
Yes, I'm here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fan West. Councilmember Monzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Mayor, you have a corn.
Thank you. Salute to the flag will be me and invocation to be led by Councilmember West. Please stand. Hands hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So if you guys can join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for this time to gather together, to hear the public and to do city business, Lord. I pray that you will be among us. May there be unity. May they, there be, you know, concerns voiced, but also things to be done to move our city forward. And so we thank you, God, for this time that we can breathe, this time to be here to voice our concerns and this time to do the city business. And we thank you, we love you, and Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember West, for your invocation. Next is City Attorney Close Session Report, please.
Yes, there is two items on the closed session. There was a discussion had, and there's nothing to report at this time. There is one item that does need to be added to the agenda. The city manager maybe could briefly summarize what that is. This is an issue that arose after the agenda was posted. It's of an urgent nature, given the Tet Parade occurring soon. And so if you could maybe summarize what that is.
Sure, the city received requests from San Diego High Schools, School Army ROTC, as well as Mid-Garvin Intermediate Schools Marching Band and Color Guard to waive their Tet Parade entry fees to participate in the upcoming parade, which is $250 each school, so totaling $500. Now, in addition to that, city staff has also been receiving inquiries regarding fee waivers. These requests were received yesterday. And so at this point, staff is requesting that the City Council consider an item to talk about these fee waiver requests, as well as any subsequent ones from schools, which would be elementary, middle, and secondary schools and districts.
I motion to add to the agenda tonight.
My second.
Motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Councilmember Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and that is to add new agenda urgency item titled Request to Waive Tet Parade Entry Fees for Elementary, Middle, and Secondary High Schools and Districts. And that would be Agenda Item Number 5.5. Councilmember Fan West.
We are voting.
This is to vote to include it. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, ma'am.
Next is Export Communications. Do we have any report? Hearing none. So we move on with the City Clerk Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no reports to present at this time, except Happy New Year.
All right. City Manager Report, please.
So I think we also missed it. There was a request. There was a request made by a member of the council to move to hear Item 6.3 before 6.2, I believe.
Yes. That's, I would like to request to move the Item Number 6.3 before Item 6.2 because of the discussion purposes. So I would like to ask the council to move that item up front.
My second.
That motion and second on the floor.
Thank you. That motion was made by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and that is to move Agenda Item 6.2 prior to Agenda Item 6.3. Councilmember Fan West.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
It's so for the rest of my city manager report. Sorry about that. So 2023 Collegiate Bowl is going to be held on January 28 at the Rose Bowl. And we're excited to announce that the NFL has invited our Westminster Police Department Honor Guard to present the nation's colors before the start of the game that day. To be selected to present the colors is of this, at an event of this magnitude, it's a great honor, and it's a direct reflection of the dedication and professionalism of our least honor guard. To check out your local, you know, your local stations for the time, but we're excited that they'll be representing the city of Westminster and the PD. Then also coming up, the 2023 Tet Parades just around the corner. It's going to be on Sunday, January 22. The parade is going to begin at 10:00 a.m., but the opening ceremony is at 9:30, and we'll have some pre-ceremony entertainment that'll begin at 8:00 a.m. as well. Travel parade. The parade is going to travel along Bolsa Avenue from Magnolia eastbound towards Besseard and through the heart of Little Saigon. So we encourage everyone to arrive early to secure your viewing spot. Still have sponsorships and parade entries available. So visit the website, westminster-ca.gov for road closure informations and how you can participate. And then, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Now is oral communication. But before we go into oral communication and before we continue with this, tonight's meeting, please allow me to briefly go over a few basic issues once and for all. As the, you know, as a mayor, it's my responsibility to do my best to run these meetings. And bullying, bullying, harassment, intimidation at the public meetings are absolutely unacceptable. I'm sure you would, you all agree to that. And in the past few, a couple of years, our discussions during council meeting have often become unruly or even disrespectful at times, both with respect to how council members, including me, sometimes talk over each other, but sometimes even with respect to comments made by the public. I believe very strongly that we need to respect each other, both as the council members, but also to those who take valuable time out of their day to attend our meeting as members of the public. The unruly behavior of the past really needs to stop. And I am sure you all agree with me on that. With the new election, I really would like to establish a new standard in how we conduct our meetings. It is my intent to try to stop comments of any personal attack. If it's clear that the comments have no bearing on the city business, that's fine. No hope. My hope is that the council and the public will understand the need to bring order to these meetings, and everyone will seek to police their own comments. We need to make these meetings more focused, respectful of each other's views, and not allow ourselves to be distracted by irrelevant issues. My goal at each meeting is to have a responsibility, a responsible and civilized discussion that allows for public criticisms and comments, but which does not degenerate into unnecessary and irrelevant attacks. In trying to accomplish this, my goal will be to err the side of caution. Give people the benefit of doubt and let them speak. I will do my best to first give people warnings to point out that they are speaking out of turn or that their comments are not within the city's jurisdiction. But if people ignore the warnings, an order cannot be maintained. We may need to call for a recess during the meeting and excuse people if necessary. That's not my intent. I want everyone to participate, but our participation must be respectful, civilized, and in proper order. Thank you for your attention. And now let us turn to oral communication. This is a time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete the green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to City Clerk. And she will call your name when it's your turn. Any person wishing to address the City Council via Zoom should press the Raise Your Hand button. If you're, and if you are using the telephone, have to dial in, press 9 to raise your hand. So with that, I would like to have the Madam Clerk start the oral communication, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have one advance speaker, and that is Nguyen Hung, and that will be followed, and he would be followed by Michael Verinja as well as Eric Duarte.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Everybody have a happy day. Ready? Okay. I request today, now that interpreter, and he will translate to the Vietnamese audience so he can listen to my speech. But to begin the format, I speak one sentence, and then he translates right away.
Excuse me, can I, can I, can I stop you for a minute, please?
Ah, no problem.
May I ask how many, how many speakers I have tonight?
Mayor, we have 34 in the audience, and there's a few more with their hands raised via Zoom.
Okay. With 34, and how many hands raised?
There's at least, well, there's multiple raising their hand right now. Just a minute, two, four, there's at least five.
Okay. You know, if you look at the agenda tonight, we have several items that, you know, the city need to do business. So I ask if we, if the council members agree to change to three minutes today for each, so that we can get, to do the city business. And if there is anything else, we can do it after.
I second that.
Let me take a vote on that.
You cannot change the law right away.
I am sorry. It is the council, it is the council, it is the council decision.
It's your freedom.
It is the council decision. If the council vote no, then you have the right. But if the council vote yes, that's the decision for the council. Please call for the vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And then that motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen to limit the oral communications from five minutes to three minutes. Councilmember Fan West.
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo.
No.
Councilmember Ho.
You know, I believe Mr. Hong Nguyen is being targeted. If you want to, if you, I mean, at your privy, you could change it. If you change it at the beginning, and it would be fair. But if it's, you know, in the midstream, you invited him to come up, and then you know, you probably think that you know what he wants to talk about. And so I think, you know, it's not right to target a speaker. So my, my answer is no.
Vice. May I say something? May I say something, Mayor?
Excuse me, Vice.
May I say something? I think it's important. We do have a huge issue that we have to deal with tonight, and we want a time for that and get all the information. It's not limiting you at all. I know that you have a point to say we are willing to listen to your concerns.
Go ahead and continue the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let me, let me go ahead. Let me go ahead and tell you, okay? It's not targeting the speaker. Okay, I, after I found out that many people are going to talk tonight, we need to concentrate on that. And he is the first one. And same thing for everyone else. So it's not targeting any particular person right now. Please go ahead.
You invited him to the podium, and then you asked. And so that is, he is being targeted. And if you, you know, if we would just stop this back and forth, maybe the right thing to do is let Mr. Hong Nguyen, you know, say his speech, and that would be the proper thing to do. And then from, from the second person on.
Kimberly, I think the city business is very important to us.
Councilwoman Ho, as I refer to you as Councilwoman Fan.
Councilwoman Ho. I think it's important that the council have voted. So I think we respect that.
Councilmember West and Councilmember Ho, I respect you guys' decision. I ask, I ask to, I ask for part so we can move on, please. I respect the council decision, but we have voted, and we can, let us continue with the meeting, please. For three minutes.
Should I start now? Yes.
Only six minutes? Okay, I hope, I think I can do it. But you know.
First of all, I would like to request that our Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Phan Nguyen resign. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hong Nguyen. I am a resident of District 4 here today to ask that Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen respond to me before the public meeting tonight. Before doing that, I would like to ask that you view a two-minute-long video of Nam Phan Nguyen, who had insulted the residents of Westminster for no reason. I apologize for this because the city received my video late, and because of that, I would not be showing the video tonight, but I would do that at the next meeting. Okay. Okay, so I think it's sufficient that you, you would listen to this video. That would be sufficient. You don't need to view the video. So I'm going to ask you to listen to someone who uses this kind of language or, and see if that person is qualified to be your, your council member.
Nam Phan Nguyen.
Fuck you, fuck all of you. I'm going to say fuck all of you, so that would get into your head. I'm going to say all these things, so it would get to you, would get into.
Not him.
You just heard what Nam Phan just said. He said that he would employ any kind of language or insult or profanity. So to wake you up, so he can employ all of those profanity. So he's going to employ profanity or to wake people up? So if a city council member is going to put for an idea or a proposal, and if the resident don't like it, then he can employ profanity to yell at them or to curse at them? The video is not, is not over. However, I'm stopping it because my face is all red listening to these languages. So first of all, I would like to request that Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen to provide his degree, engineering degree from Long Beach or Cal State Fullerton. As he has stated in his profile during the campaign. I have made this request for several months, and he still has not provided the degree. So that shows that he lied. So lying about your, lying about your profile might help you win, but it's not a so glorious victory. Perhaps you have known or heard of Republican, the Republican Senator George Santos from New York. He is being asked to resign because he lied about the degree that he got. I assume Mr. Nam Phan Nguyen, I don't have much time, but I'm going to ask whether you.
Sorry, time's up.
To be a Vice Mayor based on the profanity that you use toward the resident of the city of Westminster.
You steal my time.
I'm sorry, yeah, time's up.
Thank you very much. The next speaker. Not, hold on, please. I like, I like, normally, normally, I don't want to respond to the comments. Since this question have raised so many times, and I don't want to waste time of the city anymore for the next meeting or the following meeting. Let me tell you that, you know, I, I went to Cal State Fullerton for bachelor degrees in electrical engineering. And I went to Cal State Long Beach for master degrees also in electrical engineering. If you want, you can always go there and ask for public record. Ask for that. I don't, I'm not going to provide that to you once and for all. Please don't raise, don't waste the city time anymore. Next speaker, please.
Michael Verinja, please.
I'll start off. I don't even need this. I'm disgusted at what you just did. You don't want to hear from any of these people out here, which is why you're cutting the time down. You don't want to hear from me, any one of them. That's why you're doing it. You're trying to stifle our. Don't hate. Get the look off your face there, Amy. Your rude comments to myself and to other residents sitting in here that last meeting, wanting us to get up and move because you wanted your family to sit in front. We were sitting there peacefully. We weren't bothering anybody. We told you no. You went to the city manager and wanted her to throw us out. Well, then maybe if you shouldn't have showed up with 20 people in your entourage. And I can see what's going on on this council because they're going to push you out, Carlos. They do not want you on this council. And when that happens, if you folks think it's bad now, just wait. I'm disgusted that you would. I've got a bunch of stuff I'm going to, I was going to say I'm not. I'm pissed off about this. Yeah, that's it, smirk at me, Amy. You're restricting our freedom of speech. And you did it right at the beginning of the meeting. You didn't want to wait till later in the meeting when you would normally go through the agenda items and vote on it then. No, you wanted to do it now because you didn't want to sit and listen to people complain. That's exactly what you look at. You think that we're all out here complaining. We live in this city. We got to put up with this nonsense that comes out of this city council. What do you expect us to do? We can't very well rush down here with pitchforks and torches. That'll get us all thrown in jail. This is our only outcome, is to come down here and voice our concerns about how you're running our city. You work for us. We don't work for you guys. You work for us. And if you want to start this nonsense about cutting down our freedom of speech, it's going to come back and bite you. What was your closed session tonight? Litigation. By doing things like this and trying to stop people from saying things, you wind up with more litigation. You don't have that money. You're dumping money into a Tet Parade instead of worrying about running your city. You know, if you people really want to be leaders, then get up off your backside and learn to be a responsible leader. I'm done.
Mr. Mayor. May I?
Yes, please.
Say, so basically, I want to let you know we're not cutting your time. There's other business that we have to get done. But listen, I welcome your complaint. I agree with you. We hate corruption, okay? And that's why the new mayor and council are here for a reason. And so we want, I welcome you to come to my business hours. Every Wednesday before the City Council, I welcome you. I welcome all of you. If you have any concerns, please come, and then we can dialogue. And if you don't come, you can't complain, okay? I welcome you. So please come to my hours and make an appointment with Lynn, our assistant, council assistant, and we'll be more than happy to address your concerns and listen to your concerns. If, if the public speaking isn't enough and you want personal time with us, we'll be more than happy to sit with you. That's, that's from me and this new council.
I'm sorry.
Okay?
Next, next council meeting, I mean, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Eric Dwayne, followed by Tony Bowie.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Dwayne. I grew up in Westminster. I've lived here nearly 50 years. I grew up in District 2, raised my children in District 1, played Little League and all over Westminster and Orange County, coached my own kids in Little League in Westminster. I'm a retired Marine officer. I'm Supervisor Andrew Does, appointee to the Orange County Veterans Advisory Council, and I also sit on the Orange County Sheriff's Advisory Council. I'm here today to talk to you about my friend and his family, Jack O'Dong. They have a business here. I've known the O'Dong family for a number of years. Recently, something's been brought to light, and that is they own a billboard in the city of Westminster, just one. But after a brainstorming session last year, it seems that the City Council was thinking about getting into the business of billboards. And it seems to me. And it seems to me that they're creating a predatory practice and a monopoly, alright? The decision by the staff to put the Long family billboard at sixty-four ninety-one Maple Avenue out of business is disheartening. I think it sets a poor precedent for our community. The business has been part of this community here since 2011. For the city and staff elected officials to be working to shut down a small minority-owned business sets a dangerous and predatory precedent for a city already plagued with business plight. You only need to drive down Westminster to see a graveyard of business blight, darkened and boarded up buildings that was brought about by previous administrations and maybe some of the destructive business policies that we had here in the years past. We have a chance here to make a change, you have a chance to make a change. This one small business seems to have been targeted. This is just one, who's next? I want to take the opportunity to let you, the elected officials of Westminster, know that this position, targeting a small business is unacceptable. And the electorate is watching the situation closely. Please stand up for what is fair, I know you will. Please stand up for what is right. Please extend the permit for the Long family business, the billboard business at sixty-four ninety-one Maple Street. Put it on the agenda if you must, call for a vote. Please do the right thing. Thank you and God bless you.
The next speaker is Tony Bowie, followed by George Salsito.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Nguyen, new member Allen Frank Wang Quest, new member Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen and the old people, council member Menzo and Ms. Ho. I'm here every meeting, I was here to raise my concern about the efficiency of your work here. You are the members who was elected by the people and should work for the people and not for yourself. And I know that some of you have your own agenda. In the past, I saw, for example, Quan Chi Monument. You have cut it out after you have voted five to zero to put the Quan Chi Monument. And then Ms. Ho is the one who had the group to vote it down. And then that's why we have, I saw this city lawsuit that they put it on our city of Westminster. And it will cost our city at least two hundred thousand dollars to defend it. And a lot of money to pay for the retribution. So Ms. Ho, you are the one who create this problem for our city and also for the Quan Chi Monument number two. He's been dragging for more than two years. And that has cost our city a lot of money because of a long meeting. Every minute here, if you can do calculation, it worth around a thousand dollar a minute. So every time you put three, two hundred minutes, how much it is? Two hundred thousand dollars for every minute. That is a big hole in our city budget, Ms. Ho. People call you Ms. Ho because you make a big hole in our city of Westminster. So I would like you to to do some work as you promised that you will resign if you do not pass the pass the things here, here it is. Let's listen to it.
Okay, um, my decision, um, if I am not the elected mayor of the city of Westminster twenty, this coming election, that's November eighth, twenty twenty-two, I will remove myself from the city council.
I hope you take the election.
Time's up, the next speaker is George Salsito, followed by Stephen Shaw.
My name is Jorge Salsito, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of Jaco Luong and his family, I've known Jaco for about thirty years now. We met at Disneyland, we were employees there. And growing up with Jaco, I admired his persistence to get ahead in life. And when he erected his billboard many, many years ago, I was very proud of him. As you can see, he's not a corporate greedy individual, this is not a big entity, this is someone like you in front of me, someone like us who's striving to succeed in life and help his family. And I'm here today to support him. And I just wanted to express my feelings. I'm not sure what the city plans to do, I know you want to generate revenue, I know there's costs, there's fees, etc. But end of the day, I'm here to support Jaco, so that's all I wanted to say.
The next speaker is Stephen Shaw, followed by Christian.
Mayor City Council, thank you for having me here. My name is Stephen Shaw, I'm a dentist in Huntington Beach and Mr. Jaco Luong is a dear friend of mine, I sincerely respect him. I would like to read a little excerpt from the Small Business Act of nineteen fifty-eight, which was amended in December last year. It says, states this, "The essence of the American economic system and private enterprise is free competition. Only through full and free competition can market, can free market, free entry into business and opportunity for the expression of growth, a personal initiative and individual judgment be assured. The preservation and expansion of such competition is basic not only to the economic well-being but the security of the nation." Now I ask you this. When the local government decided to go into the billboard business and then grant themselves a business license to create a local government business, which in direct conflict with a small business such as the Luong family billboard business. And in this process, Mr. Jaco Luong's business permit for continuing their local billboard over the last two years has not been granted since two, twenty nineteen. Under the Small Business Act, how can we fairly say that this is free competition? In fact, if it is found that a local government is actually exercising their power to predatorially prohibit Luong's family from exercising their business, which they have been paying tax licensure for, to the city of Westminster for over the last twelve years, then how can we call this free competition? So in response to that, I have three requests. Number one, to expedite the process of the permit that Luong family has requested for since two thousand nineteen for their billboard on sixty, sixty-four ninety-one Maple Street. The second request is a full official explanation as to why this permit has been delayed or possibly rejected. And number three, if the permit were to be granted and the city does go into the billboard business, what assurance do small business like us have that the local government business and the billboard that is erected will be in fair competition with small business such as the Luong family billboards? Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Christian, followed by a member of the Luong family, it doesn't have a name. Followed by Gary.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Christian, I'm a friend of Jaco. Um, I just think that the precedent that this decision makes is very bad for the city in general. Chowing down on a small business is only gonna make other businesses exit. And like another gentleman said, all that does is more, more, more businesses that shut down and the revenue eventually comes down on you guys. So think about that twice, and this is a small business. It's Jaco, his wife and his beautiful daughters. Think about it, you know, if it, sometimes it's a little hard, sometimes with your guys' position, everything you guys have. Put your hand in your heart, it's not that hard, think about it.
Next speaker is Gary Hernandez, followed by Abel Martinez.
Thank you, City Council, I know you guys have a job to do. I call myself an Orange County kid, I'm proud of being from Orange County. Grew up in Santa Ana, Westminster, Anaheim. Went to Horn Grove School District. My family still lives here in Westminster. When I hear this and I remember what Westminster used to be and what it stood for, it's changed and I feel really sorry for anybody who lives in the community that is trying to earn a dollar. We're in California, it's already hard enough as it is. To start doing things to press people out, you're losing in Westminster, you're losing good people in Westminster. You know, you come to Westminster because it is a blue collar city, right? We're here to start a business, we're here to do the right thing. We're here to be Orange County Californians. But are we doing that? That's a question you have to ask yourself. I support Jaco and his family, just take it under consideration and please rethink your your opportunity here tonight, thank you.
The next speaker is Abel Martinez, followed by John Wong.
Hello, City Council. You guys have a tough job. I was standing over there and some of the stuff I heard was truly shocking and unexpected and I feel for you guys. I understand that there's tough decisions that you guys have to make. And no one's ever gonna understand your perspective or your views on it or why you make this decision or these decisions that you make throughout the days. But this one's simple, it's a family. Husband and wife, two children. I'm a businessman, local businessman myself. And it's tough, it's tough, especially after COVID, feeding your family, paying your mortgage, paying your lease, trying to put a business together, do something positive in the community, work with law enforcement, first responders. Jaco is a first-degree black belt. I'm a chief instructor, he's a first-degree black belt in my studio. I see how hard he works. He goes above and beyond, he does his job, spends time with his family and on top of that, he goes, works with first responders to teach them how to defend themselves out in the streets. He does this, he does not get paid for that. You're gonna lose good people in this city. You need to back people like that up, you need to hold on to them. I guarantee if you do that, your city will prosper like you could never believe. We're here to work, we're minorities, we know that we can work, we have our hands, we have our passion, we have our families we have to feed. Back us up, be with us. Unite the city, unite the business owners. We'll be behind you guys if you guys support us. Remember, Jaco Luong family, two daughters, husband and wife. This is not a big corporation. Help us continue helping him grow and doing something good for the community. Thank you guys for your time, God bless you.
I literally just removed my bandage this evening, so excuse me, I'm not being disrespectful, but I see double and you guys don't want me to do that. So if I may, put this on and see individually. I, my name is John Wong, I'm a Jaco uncle. I've been a realtor servicing in the community over thirty-five years. And this is the first time I hear something that decision to shut down his business and it's just disheartening, kind of trolling me for some reason. I'm just with very simple family business just to operate and supports the family, all of a suddenly say, you know what, the city want to come in and do something too and doing the same line of business and whatever it is right now, you know, we just have to remove him, right? I don't know, I feel that is awful wrong. I'm quite sure, you know, you guys put time and sitting here listening to our blight and so on. All we want to do right now is that, let's make a solution, find something, let's say it's a small business, good small business, contribute to the community. And our city, as you well know, this small business backbone of the Westministers, we stick around, we want it thrive and grow. And we rely on your right decisions to make sure our business is sustained and grow. Westminster Little Saigon is a map international, destined for people to tour, to visit. I'm quite sure you want that to be continued without any sort of bad reputation. And I'm calling on you guys to make the right decision and save, extend his Luong's family billboard business. I thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
I thank you.
The next speaker is Ty Anton, followed by Christina Wong. T Y A R N T O N?
Đôi cái thích phát biểu là Tyer Ton. T T Anton.
T Y A R N T O N? Artson?
I'm not speaking very clearly. Alright, sorry about that, sorry for the confusion. Good evening, Mayor Nguyen, council members, appreciate your time. I want to echo what Mr. Abel said very well, I love the passion that that guy has. A small business owner, here to support another small business owner. It's not a big corporation. The Long family is a fantastic family. I've only known them now for a couple of years, my daughter's best friends with his youngest. And not that it should matter because people should be treated fairly. Mayor, you mentioned at the beginning, we want to treat people with respect, right? I have a great deal of respect for this family. Just this weekend, I saw Jaco provide for a family that could not provide for their own kids. It was heartwarming. We were out ice skating down by the pier in Huntington Beach. There was a young family, the kids wanted to skate. The dad says, we can't afford it. Without hesitation, Jaco gets up, says, let me take care of this for you. I want your kids to have this experience, alright? That's the kind of person we're dealing with here. He wants to provide for his family. All we're asking is that you give him some time to discuss his permit, to extend his permit so he can provide for his family and for the community, alright? That's what we're looking for. Westminster, you've heard it time and time again from others before me. If you drive out the small businesses, what's gonna be left? Right, you're losing really good people and I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
The next speaker is Christina Wong, followed by Peter Rivas.
I'm not gonna be able to get through all of this. My name is Christina Luong, I am a registered nurse in the emergency room and the billboard is our family business. I'm here as a small business, a member of a small business community and here to fight for my family and for integrity for all the small business owners. Behind every small business is our family. I came here with my family, the community, to ask that you guys can extend our permit. To grant this extension does not cause the city anything. It only, I feel like we've been here to be good citizens and contribute positively to this community. And our billboard has been in this community for a decade. And our billboard has been in this community for a decade. It supports other community, other small businesses, advertises small businesses in the community. Uh, my husband has been in continued communication with staff. He has been working very hard to try to meet all of the requirements and requests and meeting with people. I can see him work day in, day out, all the time. He's on the phone. He's up till five in the morning to do what he can to hold on to our business, to provide for our family. It's not okay to shut down a small business just because the city wants to erect their own. You have other areas. Why do you have to take ours from us? I feel like you guys know a lot about all the facts that are surrounding our permit. So instead of reiterating all those facts, which hopefully staff has communicated with you guys, I do want to share and reiterate what Mr. Abel has said, what Mr. Todd has said. My husband is a upstanding citizen. He does community work. He goes out to children's hospitals, does charity. Will go to restaurants and he, and he purchases dinner for elderly couples that are sitting in the restaurant. He doesn't expect anything in return. And if you guys deny our permit, you're basically putting that kind of person out of business. What does that say for the community? You guys have a chance to make a difference and to do the right thing. We started off this meeting with a prayer. Behind you it says, "In God we trust." I trust in God and I trust in the council that you guys are going to make the right decision. Thank you.
My name is Mr. Rivas, Orange County native, small business owner. And if you don't know why I'm here, I think it's clear, right? I have the shirt on. Um, you've heard all the reasons why this family's permit for their small business should be extended as it had previously been for the past, I don't know, 10 years or so. So I'm going to talk about something a little bit different. I was once taught that if you do what you say you said you would do, when you said you would do it, the way you said you would do it, you would garner favor of people and they would trust you and they would follow you and they would support you. So I know there's a few new people on the council. So I thought I'd bring it to your attention that last year, the city adopted for the first time, there's a strategic plan. And in the strategic planning workshop, they came up with, it looks like a mission statement and some core values. The mission statement says that the city of Westminster is committed to providing the highest quality of service, ensuring that Westminster is a desirable place to live, work, play, and do business. The business that they were referring to, I believe, was the citizenry doing business, which generates economic prosperity for the city, that generates tax revenues, how we get to pay for these beautiful chambers and salaries of staff. Some of the core values that were adopted were establishing cooperative and efficient enterprises, like the Wong family business. Participation encouraging citizen, business, and employee interaction. Again, I think we're talking about the Wong family business along with other small businesses run by the citizens of the city. Loyalty is one of the items identified on the core value list, and it's dedicating ourselves to the community and the organization. Again, the community, dedicating to the community. There's a three-year goal that was identified and it's achieve financial stability, which is a, a good goal to have. Um, out of the meeting came a list of things that were accomplished in the city for the year of 2022. There were 63 items identified. Six of them were the same thing over and over, about a 10% pay raise for staff. We want our staff to be well paid. There's also another item that's identified about focusing on revenue. I think it says, uh, increased, I'm sorry, uh, where is it here? Ideas for possible new revenue generation, right? So we're talking about raising revenue. And how do we balance that with our core values and the mission statement that was adopted? Rejecting a permit for a small family business that's operated on private property, where property taxes are paid and permits and fees are paid to the city is not a way to increase revenue. You're going to decrease it, right? So, one other comment before my 15 seconds are out. I thought I had five minutes. There was a presentation by staff to the city council that said there were, there were no revenue generated from the billboard. That's not true. It's inaccurate. So we want to get that corrected. Revenue is generated from the Wong family business for the city. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Ryan Neptune, followed by Stephen Hernandez.
Mayor Nguyen, members of the city council. My name is Ryan Neptune. I don't live in Westminster. I'm an Orange County native. Uh, I do however frequently patron many of the small businesses and restaurants in the city. Um, I've come to voice my concern over the decision by the staff uh, of the city of Westminster to not renew the permit for the Wong family billboard. Um, a decade plus year old small business located at 6491 Maple Avenue. Uh, this decision puts an end to a small family business, providing of a family of four. Sitting right over there. Um, to my knowledge, uh, and I've talked with Jacko extensively about this, all the requirements for renewal of his permit have been met by him and his family. And to date, the city has not provided a compelling reason for denying their renewal. I believe that refusing to renew the Wong's permit without cause sets for an unfortunate precedent for the city of Westminster. The city has been built on and thrives because of small family businesses like theirs. News of this decision will discourage new small businesses from opening in Westminster and be cause for alarm to current owners, causing them to consider moving to nearby city that is more friendly to stay, uh, to small family owned businesses like theirs for safety for their futures. Based on this, I know it would behoove the good people of this council and the people of Westminster whom you represent to renew the Wong family business billboard permit or to work with the Wong's to find a solution which allows them to continue to provide for their family while doing business in and creating revenue for the city of Westminster. Uh, so again, I just, please, I'm asking you to extend the permit. And if you're unable to do so, at least place the issue on the agenda as soon as possible to give uh, Mr. Jacko Wong and his family an opportunity to plead their case in front of the council and to put it to a vote. I thank you for your consideration and your time. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, as you guys can tell, there's an awful lot of people here to support the Wong family. I've known Jacko and Christina for about 15 years. So my wife and Christina are really great friends. Uh, I don't think there's really, really many more things that I can say that everyone behind me hasn't really said already. Here to support the family, hopefully you guys will actually open your minds and hearts up to opening and, or giving, giving them an opportunity to, uh, extend their permit. I've worked in the city of Westminster. I, I've always thought that it was a pretty good city. Come here pretty often to support the restaurants. Got the best places here. My wife's a Vietnamese. And, you know, I, I don't think they're really asking for much. I've owned my own small business before. It's really tough. It's hard as hell employing a bunch of people and, you know, just putting yourself out there because you're really the one at risk. You're putting up your own money, uh, risking your family's livelihood with the possibility of getting nothing in return. Uh, I, I think in this case, there really is no risk for the city. So, you know, hopefully, uh, you guys will give them an opportunity to extend their permit. So, thank you again.
The next speaker is Juan, followed by Tiffany. Looks like H O A N four five. Have a Gmail account.
Yeah, boy. From the Loon family. Well, actually no, this, this one, H O A N, there's no, there's no last name.
Followed by Tiffany. Tiffany Din. No, maybe left. Followed by Bill. Could be.
Bill E. and Din.
It's okay.
Gentlemen, I only have one question is, why are you guys going to take this man's business away from him? He's had it since 2011. He's got a long time uh, contract with his landlord. And I was just wondering, why do you want to do away with it? What, what's the reason for it? Anybody got an answer?
So, I can share comments.
This is the time that you would speak. They don't, um, comment until after you're done.
Well, that's the reason. I, I heard that the reason you guys want to do away with this business is so the city could make more money doing it themselves. So, I just thought that wasn't, uh, the way to do life. That's all.
The next speaker is Jacko, followed by Alan.
Happy New Year, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff. Please help save the Wong family business. My name's Jacko Wong, um, and I operate that billboard at 6491 Maple Avenue. We are trying to save the Wong family billboard business that supports our family of four, plus Dingo, he's at home. Uh, but more importantly, we are advocating for all small businesses because really any business could be next. I'm a Vietnamese American, raised and educated in Orange County. And come from a family that fled Vietnam during the fall of Saigon in 75. My wife is immigrant from Korea. We are a family of hardworking small business owners, starting with my grandma. She's over here. She used to be a Realtor in the, in the city and she still lives here. Um, my parents as well, they still, uh, own and operate small businesses. Uh, I and my family, uh, we live and work in Orange County. Obviously, um, you know, uh, we have our billboard in the city. Uh, my wife's an ER nurse, as she said. She owns and operates her own photography business. Um, we have two school age girls that are right there. Um, and aside from advertising, um, you know, I volunteer, like Abel said. Anyways, the, um, the city Westminster said they didn't want to, or the, the city of Westminster said they want to get into the billboard business and that's, I'm just wondering, maybe is that why the city's not extending my permit? I don't know. I still don't have official answer why there's no extension. Um, we have met all the requirements to have our permit extended, spent tens of thousands of dollars doing so. Um, and despite our countless attempts to reach out to the city for a resolution, uh, we just, we're just not getting the proper amount of attention. Um, Mayor, Council, and Staff have been aware for a while, our willingness to convert the sign to digital and share the revenue with the city. In fact, in 2018, we submitted a application for just that. However, we're still waiting for Caltrans to issue their permit. The city has told us that they want to get into the billboard business. I had a conversation with Assistant City Manager and, and that was made clear. Your plan is to do billboards only on city-owned property per the RFP that went out on December 22nd. It just, it's, I don't know. It's, we can compete. Um, if it's the playing field is, is level. But if, if the government, um, doesn't issue a permit, then it's not. It's just, it's pretty sad. So, our billboard costs the city nothing and, um, you know, basically we just want to be treated fairly and save our business. Um, a couple of real quick, uh, things. We do advertise only city Westminster businesses. We pay per city code $500 a year plus 1% of our gross receipts. And we do offer free airspace to the city.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Alan, followed by Rafael.
Dear Mayor Nguyen, council members, city manager, and city staff. My name is Alan Serna, and I am a local small business owner and shop and visit the city of Westminster frequently. The reason I am here is to support and view my concerns regarding the Wong family and their billboard business here in our community located at 6491 Maple Avenue. It has been there since 2011 and has provided and continues to provide residents the opportunity to shop and visit local merchants in our city by visual advertising. The Wong family continues to follow all guidelines, rules, and regulations set forth at the local, county, state, and federal levels. They are law-abiding, hardworking, local small businesses trying to support their family. The decision by staff to put the Wong family out of business is unfathomable and sets a bad precedent for our community. I ask for the city of Westminster staff to reconsider and find a neighborly and friendly solution and not to force out a small business owner in our community. On behalf of the Wong family and friends, please place this on the agenda ASAP so the family business will continue to operate in our city and just treat them fairly. If you force down and shut down the Wong family's small business, what business will be next? Thank you for your time.
How been you, Rafael Barbosa? I'm here for Jacko and his family. Um, I want you to think about very well what you're doing. I mean, I imagine you guys have families that own a business. And, um, you know how hard it is, especially through COVID and the prices, gas prices and everything else that's happening in the state. And it's not easy being a small business owner. Um, he's a good person. I, um, I've known him for years. He's the kind of person you want in the city. He's not a criminal. He's a regular person, just like all of us that wants to make a living, take care of his family, pay his bills. Um, there's not much for me to say, just like everyone, everyone, everyone else has said to you guys that, no, you should give him a chance. Extend his permit. Think about what you're doing, how you're affecting the small business. The message you're sending to other businesses in the city. Um, I'm just here to support my friend and his family and I hope you guys make the right decision. That's it. Thank you.
The next speaker. The next speaker is AJ Jolavet, followed by Madeline Wong.
Mayor, members of the city council, greetings to you all. Um, I'm a personal service like you. Um, I like to think I understand a bit about being a personal service. I'm a Marine Corps Combat War Vet. Um, I fought terrorists, warlords, and Saval volcanoes. And I continue to serve the community with, with my friends here who are in support of this Wong family. At a minimum, with the community showing up in this way, it means that we should pay attention. That's on the minimum side. On the extreme side, it means something went very wrong in your processes. And that probably means pay attention even closer. I know it's not easy for you guys up there. I get that. Um, miscommunications happen inside and outside of, um, business. Sometimes the right hand isn't speaking to the left hand that's in charge of proper ethics. The good news is the miscommunication can be resolved right here, right now, I think with a vote. I don't understand your system completely, but I think so. Um, it's the opportunity to reassure the community that you are in direct support of the dream, of them and the American dream. Uh, financial independence is a huge part of the American dream. Um, from the business perspective, if the city wants to make adjustments on how they do business and their business models, that's perfectly fine. Um, do it with small businesses and small businesses in mind, not behind or around them. It's very important. Thank you all for your service.
Good evening. I am Madeline Luong.
Good evening. I am Madeline Luong. I'm only eleven and I'm still here to ask to please extend my dad's permit. This billboard is most of my family's income and it would be, it would mean so much if you could extend my family's permit and support our family. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something? May I say comments?
If I may, could I ask you to retain that until the last person because this is a time for the public to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Roma Absolute Freedom, Romeo, followed by Deborah Mariscan.
I'm Mayor in the City of Council. I've been a resident of Orange County for over twenty-five years. Good friend of Jacko, along with his family for over ten years. And met by coincidence, but stayed in contact because when two good people meet, you meet on a level that you know that it's positivity amongst both of us. And every time we're together, it's always good vibes. And I'm here to personally just, as you guys know, back up their family business because it's not just affecting their family, but relationships like ours. If something was to happen to their family, who knows what happens to their home? And as being a resident of Huntington Beach, coming to Westminster, being a patron, eating here, shopping here, knowing that small businesses is the fabric of the community. And with businesses like this disappearing, it's just a bigger landscape of what's happening to one in Westminster. So I just beg you guys to make the right decision and keep their family business going so that way everyone is just happy and everything just goes smoothly. And the city continues to make their income from this business and everyone's happy. Thank you.
Officers, staff, people that are here. I want to say how much I appreciate the number of attendees that we have tonight. And I want to make sure that my comments are recorded so that anyone that watches on Zoom knows what I'm saying. And also that when it's uploaded to YouTube, my comments are on there as well. Council, if you respond back to someone, if you could do it respectfully, that would be great, not raise your voice. And if you could also pay attention to the speaker, that would be fabulous also. So 5.1, yes, street improvement on twenty-second and twenty-third, absolutely. 5.2, officers, yes, we need more officers. Our guys are stretched out to oblivion. My car got broken into on Sunday night. Thankfully, I have a good relationship with some of the police officers and hopefully they're going to patrol a little bit longer or a little bit more than what they have been. A number of my neighbors have also been broken into in my neighborhood. I'm over by Liberty Park. They don't report it. They just get frustrated. 5.3, we've been through this before. We don't need a mayor office back in the city. Is that 5.3? I'm sorry. 6.1 is the mayor office. I apologize. We don't need that back in the city hall and we don't need in staff to be perceived as intimidated. 6.2, public speaking. Then you all take an oath to support the Constitution, which is freedom of speech. And knocking us from 5.5 minutes to three doesn't give us enough time to say the things that we need to do. I've had to cut some things out that I wanted to say tonight. Not cool. Meeting time. I get off work 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock. I can't be here at 6 o'clock. The meeting needs to say at seven. You need to stay on track. You need to do your business. And if it goes until ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, you signed up for that and you need to stick with it. I don't like the meetings to go late at night. Lastly, we are $3 million short the first quarter of this year in income. If we lose businesses, we're not going to have income. Thank you.
The next, the next speaker is Philip Braun, followed by Jessica Lostinow.
Council members, my name is Philip Braun. I'm a small business owner. I'm here today because I'm a good friend of Jacko and I want to support. Now, one of the things I have here that I wish the mayor could see, this is a permit from Irvine. That's where I have one of my companies. I was out because I had surgery. The permit was not going to get extended. Okay, they went so far as to help me out, do everything over the phone and waive the late fee. This way, my business could be retained in Irvine. This is what you're competing against, right? Doing things like this to turn away small business owners is not going to bring you more revenue. It's going to make us walk out and go to other cities like Irvine. So that's something to think about. One of the other things I wanted to do is I wanted to read to you the definition of community. Because the reality is, at the end of the day, this is either a community or a town, but it's up to everybody here. Community is a group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. A feeling of fellowship with others has a result of sharing common attitudes, interests and goals. Now, the reason I think that is important is because I think you can see tonight, everybody has one thing in common here. We aren't wearing these shirts because they're trendy, because they're fashionable. It's to make a statement. We all stand together. So I hope when you look out at this, you realize what this community is standing for. And I do want you to realize, these are the people that decided to show up tonight because you don't have a large location for us. There's a much, much larger group in this community that will stand up for this family. So I do hope that you do what is right. You stand by small businesses. You stand by people in the community that want to see the community succeed. And I hope that we can all grow together because that's really the goal at the end of the day. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Lostinow. I'm a resident of District One and I'm here to discuss three agenda items. And I think I understand the motivation behind agenda items 5.3, 6.2 and 6.3. The goal is to make those meetings, all meetings, more efficient and less contentious. And I agree with the need for these meetings to be more productive and more concise. But my concern is that the new policies you're looking at really don't get to the heart of the problem. A better way to manage the amount of time consumed by public comments would be to communicate with the public when we reach out to you. By really listening and not just hearing, but listening to the concerns of the residents, you're going to cut down on the amount of people that are here at the podium. If you're responsive to your constituents, then you're going to get their cooperation instead of their anger. And if the meetings are dragging on to all hours of the night, start the meetings on time. This meeting was delayed. The last meeting was delayed by almost an hour. And really honestly, for the last year, almost all of the meetings have started late. So that seems pretty simple to me. And keep, I know this is a little harsh, but please keep your comments concise and on topic. Be prepared by reading the agenda carefully and speaking with staff and your residents before the meeting and then thinking about your goals. My biggest concern though is the proposal to require two council members to agree to place an item on the agenda. It would be short-sighted to think that this policy won't affect you individually because right now you have an ally and that person will always agree with you to put something on the agenda. If you've been watching these meetings for the last four years at least, you've seen alliances shift. You've seen majorities shift. Who's to say that maybe someday you want to bring something forward for your constituents, but you can't even find one person to agree with you to put it on the agenda? How are you going to respond to your constituents who elected you to bring their ideas forward here at the dais? The leaders of each district need to represent their residents. And if that means that they alone place something on the agenda, so be it. Really, items 5.3 and 6.3, they look like obstructionism. They look like a way to silence people. And one more thing, it's a new year, a time for, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Lamb, followed by Tree Lamb.
First of all, I would like to say hello to the City Council of the City of Westminster. First, I want to say that Nam Huan Nguyen doesn't deserve to be the Vice Mayor and also a City Council Member of the city. Because he is unethical. He put a gun to his wife's head.
Excuse me, is it a fact, evidence? I don't want you to, a personal attack. If you have the evidence, then show it. If you don't have the evidence today, please go ahead and address the council. You know, the council can take the criticisms. Please, it's time for the council to do their business, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hong Fuen Nguyen had already sent you 151 pages of that document. And now you're saying that you don't know about that case?
Received man.
I will then send it to you. Once again, Mr. Charlie Chin Nguyen. You have been a mayor for only twenty minutes and you have done things unbecoming a mayor. You have tried to silence the residents here.
Please address the council, please.
I'm going to ask that Mayor Charlie Chin Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Phan Nguyen resign from the council. And if you don't do that, I and Mr. Hong Fuen Nguyen will file a lawsuit and I will be the name plaintiff on that lawsuit. I wish you a good day, good evening and I wish you good sleep.
The next speaker is Tree Lamb, followed by Cindy Day.
Good evening. I'm myself, US veteran, NFL. Thank you for your service. I'm here to represent 2,000 people on YouTube channel, try to recall Nam Huan Nguyen and Charlie Chin Nguyen. Because he had YouTube, actually, he rented the YouTube, actually, he run the show YouTube channel with his partner named Nguyen Tin Dũng, who's been calling names of my wife, calling my name, as I'm a US soldier, he calling me a communist soldier. And he was there. He didn't say anything. He didn't say anything to his partner. Hey, that's not appropriate to say to a US soldier. As I served the United States for eight years, fought in Iraq and I don't deserve to call as a communist.
Please address your comments to the council.
Well.
Yeah, the goal here is for you to communicate to the council. The public will hear you, but you should address it to the council.
I'm sorry. Okay. And as a military member, we know how to show up on time, right? We served the same for US, United States government. We know how to show up on time, but you guys don't. And first of all, when I heard that you yourself make the rule that from five minutes to three minutes, you should review all the speakers in the house. How many speakers in the house first before you make a judgment to lower five minutes to three minutes? Okay, so, and then another thing is, I sat there and I looked each of you guys how to listen to the speakers. You swing your chair all the time. You don't even pay attention to the speakers. You swing your chair left and right. That to me, you're not respecting the speakers and you not deserve to be a mayor. That's it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Candy Day, followed by Mike Trung. Mike Trung?
Mike Trung. Can I start now? Good evening, everyone. You know, when I first came to US, the first thing I learned myself is never say never. What I mean is, now, you know, I don't have to say is, something unbelievable happened. The bad guy who become the leader, I mean Nam Hua. No one know Nam Hua than I do. He came to my house, we hang out, we know everything. But unfortunately, I hang out with a bad guy. He and his partner, insult me, myself, my family, my dad mom, my mom passed away. You know, the big thing in your life, you lost your mom. I lost my mom. I cried. He laughed. He make joke on my mom, right here, evident right here, we can see it. He insult Manzo, Kimbilla Ho, insult everybody, right Nam Hua? Here the ugly thing, today, I got to keep my mouth shut. I can't. I met him in a restaurant, today with my wife. You know what? I don't know he directly or indirectly. He sent a message to threaten me. Today, I'm standing here, I prove you wrong. You cannot threaten me, Nam Hua. I'm ready, every game you play, I'm ready for it. You have to assume yourself. You need to step down. You lost your wife. You lost control. You lost everything. You're the fail guy. You lost your beautiful wife. You're going to control her. I'm successful guy. I don't business. I'm a idiot. I have beautiful wife, eighteen years. And you say I'm the bad guy? Can you prove? Mr. Chi, you support him. Can you name anything, one thing good about him? I don't think you can. I'm not attacking you with judging, but add yourself, one thing good about this guy. Besides criminal, restraining order, didn't pay tax, tickets, you know what? Look, evident right here, so evident can see it here. He insult myself, my mom, my kid, his partner called my wife a hooker. And he's a water, right Nam Hua? Right here, everyone lie. You know what? But you need to step down, or I put your name in my comment list, I will sue you. I know you don't have money, but you have to pay first. Respect yourself, respect your family, step down. Don't let people remove you, that be more awesome, Nam Quang. Be the man, you told me you the man, I play game for the beauty now. I'll take the game I think you play, I'm ready for it.
The next speaker.
Mayor. Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just briefly make a statement there. I, we allowed you to continue with that, but I just want to say, when you're making a comment, try to relate it to, that, you know, if you're, if you're criticizing the public officials, that's fine. But it should relate to their fitness to perform duty or something along those lines. Try to avoid things that are purely private, that have nothing to do with the city council and what they can do. You know, keep it focused. We did allow you to speak, but I, you know, if, if it's related to their ability to perform in office, that's, that's valid. So I just want to make sure that's clear to the public. We want to try to avoid just purely private matters that have nothing to do with city business.
Thank you, city attorney, for clarification on that. I'm sorry, no. Please, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Terry Rains, followed by James. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that's clear to the public. We want to try to avoid just purely private matters that have nothing to do with city business.
Thank you, city attorney, for clarification on that. I'm sorry, no. Please, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Terry Rains, followed by James. Thank you.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster watchdog. Item 6.2 and 6.3, our two new council members started bitching about the length of the council meetings at their very first meeting. Listen, if you can't commit five to eight hours twice a month to do your friggin job and then resign now and don't run for public office ever again. As the new Gang of Three's mouthpiece, Amy West's solution is to drastically reduce our time to speak by 40% and limit meetings to just four hours. Really rich coming from you, Amy. You talk the talk about supporting freedom, our constitution, and fighting against communism, but you sure as hell don't walk the walk. You illegally block constituents on social media, you refuse media interviews and resident questions, and refuse to attend candidate events even in your own district. You don't want to hear anyone talk except yourself. You ran for Congress, right? You know how long those meetings last? Amy, you are the reason the last meeting ran so late. You held everything up because there weren't enough seats for your late arriving 20-plus member policy. Forcing members, people who had arrived very early to get seats, first come, first served, to be thrown out in the cold. You really do come across as an arrogant dimwit. I don't just complain, though. I offer real solutions. Number one, three minutes per speaker at the beginning of the meeting, plus two or three minutes per speaker per agenda item later when each item is considered. Two, let each speaker decide by indicating on the green slip if they want to speak on non-agenda and agenda items in those first three minutes, or if they want to speak only on non-agenda items, and then speak on agenda items later when each one is considered. If someone speaks on agenda items at the beginning, they cannot speak on the same ones later. This will cut total public comment time substantially, including double time for translation. And it will not force residents to stay late just to speak on one agenda item. Perfect compromise and easy peasy to implement, heck, I'll even redesign the speaker slips. Oh, and don't worry, I'm probably the only resident that speaks on multiple agenda items and stays until the bitter end of every meeting. A regular meeting start time of 6:00 PM might be okay, but the end time absentee vote to extend should remain at midnight. Council, please approve my suggestions or make no changes at all. Item 5.3, we already know the history. The Gang of Three back in 2019 put a policy in place that the majority had to approve agenda items, which incensed everybody. Then it was reversed in 2021. Has there been any problems? No. Council members are now elected by district and should be able to add items relative to their district and/or that their constituents want. Other council members may not understand the need for those items because they live and represent other parts of the city. Council member West, you want to eliminate frivolous items from the paralyzed government? Well, you can start with this one. Do you know what serial meetings are under the Brown Act? That would force, this would force council members to shop their proposed items to council members, other council members, which could lead to violations. Amy, aren't you about freedom? Yeah, so give other council members the freedom to do their job and butt the hell out. Vote no on this item. And my comment time is run out, but Charlie is on the Vietnamese media telling everybody it is per person and not per household for the gift program and a bunch of other stuff. He also said it would be reactivated tonight without knowing what the votes.
The next speaker.
Dear Mayor Nguyen and members of city council, my name is James Bond and unlike the, my twin brother 007, I don't have a license to kill. But I do have a license to do business in the city of Westminster. And I have been doing business in the city of Westminster for 28 years. And my family have been doing business in the city for 42 years. So that's 70 years of small business in the city, the great city of Westminster. And that's, that is the, small business is the heart and soul of America, right? We all, you know, just like the famous, what Neil Diamond said, you know, they all coming to America, right? It's, you know, people climbing over fence, swimming over rivers and going on boats to come to America because of the small business American dream. And the decision to, you know, drive Jacko's business out of Westminster is unconscionable. And that's, that's set a bad precedent to, you know, for our city. I would like, you know, for Mr. Mayor and members of city council to encourage you to come to an amicable solution and that, you know, doesn't push small business out of the city. Please extend the permit to the, the Jacko's family and let them operate. Thank you.
The next speaker. The next speaker is Thap Bui, followed by Min Trum.
Good evening, council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a while since I've been back to these chambers, probably more than a year. Today, I'm simply moved overwhelmingly respectful of so many people from all paths of life, from so many races, so many ages, come here in support of the Luong family. I'm new to this issue. But listening to their speech, I'm very concerned and that's what moved me to fill out a card and come here to speak. I was hoping that I heard Mr. Luong incorrectly. But I'm afraid I was correct when I listened to his statement. That the city somehow delaying or probably is trying to delay his or cancel his permit. Because the city is trying to do, to get into this business themselves. Or perhaps, maybe because you guys want to give it to someone else that is more important than this small family that have been doing this billboard since 2011. It is wrong for the city to get into business and compete with residents and other businesses. I have never seen any city doing that. Not in my city, not in nearby city. So I strongly urge you to not rescind his license to operate that billboard. You might open a can of worm and you might invite ACLU to jump in and help them. So be careful about your actions. It's also wrong for the city. Now, you've been wrong for doing this in the past when the city itself organized the Ted Parade. You see in Pasadena, the city of Pasadena never themselves organized the Rose Parade. It's being done by a foundation. The Rose Parade Foundation have nothing to do with the city of Pasadena. In Garden Grove, the strawberry festival and strawberry parade being done by the Strawberry Foundation, not by the city of Garden Grove. We don't, we are not in the business, the city should not be in the business of organizing those events themselves because they are competing against other, other things. And they opened a can of worm. As a public entity, you are limited in your, what you can do, what you can.
The next speaker is Min Trum.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I'm here on a personal note that I know the Luong family, I want to support them after hearing their story. My profession is merchant acquisition and primarily in signage. So I've been traveled through 50 states. Not a single city I've seen where the city actually forced a small business take out a sign so a city can bring their own entity in there. Something is grandfathering. It doesn't happen. I have never seen it happen. That's on a personal note. Great family, I know Mr. Luong's dad, wife, great friends, we ride Harleys together, we hang out together. On a professional note, I also own a small business in the city of Westminster. Operating here for three years, right? If the city is competing with small businesses, what is there left for us to do? And Mr. Luong is not asking you to open a road through your backyard or, you know, loan him a million dollars. He's asking to extend the permit. First and foremost, Ms. West, you said you always have time to, to talk to the public, talk to the, the businesses, talk to the people. You may suggest, you know, I may suggest you reach out to Mr. Luong and see what the case is. Maybe the words haven't got to the city council or the mayor and maybe the permit just stuck somewhere in the process, right? But it's, it's a great way to start, right? You here willing to listen to us, we hear the vote for you. You serve the public, you know, just like the veterans here. I myself served six and a half years in the United States Navy. So I understand that, I appreciate your service. But again, the city should not be in the business competing with, with small businesses, especially small businesses. You know, if you look beyond that doors of business, you have lives just like your own. You have family, you don't want people in there take food from your kids' table. You don't want, you know, people to go into your backyard and take your stuff. That's exactly the same thing that the cities do into this family right here by not approving a, a permit, approving a permit. Nothing more, nothing less. So, thank you.
Is Candy here? Okay, then we will move on to Zoom speakers at this time. The first speaker is Travis Allen. Please unmute yourself and you may begin. Travis? Travis Allen? Please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll continue to the next one. The next one is Jody Boyd. The next.
Are we totally 100% up? Because we, we have to pause until it's up, yeah. Okay.
She lowered her hand. The next speaker, actually Travis Allen, are you able to unmute yourself and begin speaking? They're unable to unmute? Okay, just a moment, please. Let's try another speaker and otherwise we may be having difficulties here. Amy Walsh. Can you please unmute yourself and begin speaking?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
So, so much to unpack. Do, I saw the timer saying, do I actually have five minutes or do I only have three? I want to clarify that before I start.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Is there any way that we can see the timer?
Just a moment, please.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Okay, we have you back on three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, wanted to make sure. Well, I want to start out with, you know, it, I can't believe that we're doing, that the council agreed to do from five minutes to three minutes. I understand that there's a lot of speakers there that wish to speak on a certain item. When I was on school board, and we've done it at the city council level too, not just the school board, when there were a certain amount of people for a specific item, that item can be reduced to a smaller time to make sure that everybody is allowed to speak. But if there are other people that are speaking about something different, generally, those get the same amount of time. So maybe look at that next time instead of just doing a blanket statement. I had a lot of other things to talk about tonight. However, the one thing that I'm going to talk about is the fact that when I logged into the Zoom meeting, expecting to see, you know, the, the flag salute and whatnot. Instead, I got to play city council for a few minutes and sit in closed session while they discussed an item. And I would say that they're lucky that I'm a good person. And I messaged one of the council members to say, hey, just an FYI. In the meantime, there were other people on that Zoom with me. And in that meantime, they were talking about a billboard, which now I know what billboard they were talking about. I would like to say that at this point, with a fair amount of us on Zoom that accidentally got to see part of closed session tonight and hear about what you guys were talking about in regards to said billboard, it might be a good idea to bring that to the forefront tonight. And let's take care of that for this family and get that squared away. I think that's of vital importance. And that's all I have to say. I'm sure other people will say more, but that's what I'm saying. That's all. Thanks.
The next speaker on Zoom is David. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Okay, I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I am here to support the Long family, like so many others. It does appear that the council has much bigger issues to deal with. And I've known this family for several years. I've worked side by side with Jacko on several projects, watched him work to support his family. When my family had an opportunity to take a cancer survivor and his family to Disneyland, we asked for help. And Jacko and his family volunteered to help immediately. You've got a good family, you've got a good person in your community. I'm a businessman. I'm a business owner, Air Force veteran, eight years, and have owned business for forty years. And it's very difficult to run a business. It's very difficult to take care of your family with your own sweat. And when you're good at what you do, it succeeds. But when outside forces intervene, that through no fault of your own threaten to destroy what you've built, it gets to be pretty desperate. You guys seem to have a simple choice in front of you. And that is to quietly extend that permit or bring it to the council for a vote. Not a difficult choice, not a difficult decision. You need to step up and do the right thing. Thank you. That's it.
Wait just a moment. Travis, please try to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, this is Travis Allen. Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, I'm not sure why the camera's not working. I, I am addressing you in a suit, so thank you very much Westminster City Council. It's great seeing you all again. I got involved in this issue about the Luang family billboard because I had heard that, you know, Jacko Luang has been a very great friend of mine for a long time. But he is a small business in the city of Westminster. And he came to me and he said, look, I have this real issue. I have a real problem. I've been trying to extend my billboard permit since two thousand and eighteen. I want to get a big digital billboard. My funding's already in place. I know the city wants to do this, but literally I think the city staff is trying to run me out of business. And I said, you know, wait a second, that doesn't sound right. He said, no, no, look, I have proof. And so he sent me a video of city council meeting on six, eight of twenty-two, when city staff addressed the council and it said on live public camera that is now recorded, specifically that they were staff specifically was looking to get rid of Mr. Luang's billboard on his private property on the Cube Smart parking lot. So verbatim, according to the assistant city manager at the time, they could cut a deal with a different operator on that same piece of private property. So on the six, eight, twenty-two city council meeting, city staff explicitly was stating they were trying to run this particular small business out of Westminster. When I saw that, I was infuriated. As you know, I was your state assemblyman for six years from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen. And when I was in Sacramento and across the state of California, I always fought for small businesses. I always fought for the little guy. I, I would also fight for big business, but the point here is that if we don't protect our small businesses, they're the lifeblood of our community. And what's happening in the city of Westminster after I dug deep into this issue, and I've spoken to many of the city council members privately about this as well, as well as everyone that I can think of in the entire community. What's happening is city staff has stonewalled Mr. Luang because the city staff is trying to monopolize the billboard business in Westminster. And this is coming simply because the city of Fountain Valley apparently inked the deal for five hundred thousand dollars, but revenue shared to them. So I know Westminster has some money problems. City staff apparently came up with this great idea to run out, drive out the other businesses in the billboard industry so the city could get a monopoly. Now, subsequent to the six, eight, twenty-two meeting, apparently city staff has upped its rhetoric because as I hear the, the, the new words that are coming out from various sources, city now wants to only have digital billboards on city land, which would mean the city has a complete monopoly in this business. And, and not only is this driving out Mr. Luang's business, but it would drive out the other operators as well, essentially saying that the city has found what it believes to be a lucrative niche that it can monopolize. Let me tell you something. If you know anything about me and what I've stood for and how I represented all of the residents of Westminster, it was very simple. We need to stand up for business and not for government.
Your time's up, sir. The next speaker is Roger Mindrum. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right. Well, that was a great example of why we need more than three minutes. Mr. Allen, thanks for those comments. Anyways, I'm going to get to mine. Good evening. My name is Roger Mindrum, resident of Westminster. Tonight is a great example of this great community. Wow, great people, great friends here tonight. Thanks for being here tonight and supporting your friends and their business. Let's see if I can get my points across in three minutes. I doubt it, but let's see. First, we can see that Amy West still hasn't found any professionalism, the way she's acting tonight, just wow. And cutting into public comments tonight, geez, learn some basic decorum. When your name is called to vote, just vote. No more comments from you. Just vote. Learn the process. While I can appreciate ideas to make these meetings shorter, tonight's agenda item regarding the, the speech time, I know it tonight is different because there were so many speakers, but normally there's not. Normally there's not, and you just wanted to come in here and arbitrarily cut our speaking time. Tonight's agenda item, you're going about it all wrong. I understand tonight is a bit different than usual with over thirty speakers. Generally, there are many other reasons that these meetings have gone on into the week morning past midnight. The residents' involvement and comments are not the reason. I don't believe anyone prior has suggested that public comments are the reason these meetings go too long. What I do find disturbing is the fact that every time I saw a social media video by Amy West, she was talking about fighting for our rights, fighting, protecting your freedoms. She must have said those words thousands of times in the past year with her campaigning, right, Amy? Right? And just about a month ago, you were sworn in, you swore an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. Amy, that's your biggest claim as a hardcore Republican American, right? Protecting our freedoms, not letting the government take away any of our freedoms. That's your mantra, your main mantra you spout about all the time. I used to laugh every time I heard you say that as there's really nothing as a member of the city council that you can protect or not protect our freedoms, except that. Except our time to speak at these public meetings. The one thing that you can affect, you're going about it wrong. So all you people who bought her snake oil and voted for her, I hope you're watching this. I hope you're watching how she is. The first chance you get, your second day on the job and you want to chip away and take away forty percent off of our time to redress our government, our First Amendment right, local government, some say the most important, supposed to be the easiest form of government to be a part of and possibly make a difference in our community. If you bothered to ask, are you serious?
Sorry, the next speaker is Luhon. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, hello Westminster Council. My name is Lily Luhon. My husband and I are small business owners and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Luang family. By the way, we were privy to what was said during closed council as we were signed on to Zoom as well. Mayor Nguyen, upon reviewing your bio on the Westminster website, it mentions how you have successfully managed your own business in the city of Westminster. You of all people should be able to understand what it takes to run a small business in this community. How would you feel if this was your situation? According to the SBA, small businesses created a net twelve point nine million new jobs in the last twenty-five years, which accounts for sixty-six percent of all jobs. Small businesses are extremely important and you're pushing them away. Furthermore, your bio praises that your sincere enthusiasm is to make the city of Westminster a safe and prosperous place to live and raise the family. The Luang family is trying to follow in these footsteps. If the city is going to monopolize the sign business, then how is it possible for the Luang family or any business to do what you, what you've done or what you're saying you're trying to do? Would this be considered your definition of creating a prosperous place and raising a family? We thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Camila Overbeek. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Can you hear me, Lucy?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I see that Westminster is starting off twenty twenty-three in full throttle chaos mode, starting with at least seven minutes of closed session being broadcast to the public. So Mayor Nguyen, opening oral communication, calling the first speaker, and then the mayor calling for a change in speaking time from five minutes to three minutes, to Ms. Amy West, again being disrespectful to other council members. Speaking of Amy, please take note of my Zoom picture. I addressed Ms. West blocking constituents on social media at the last meeting and between then and now, she has managed to block me on even more platforms. So Ms. West, I find it laughable that you just proclaimed to everyone in that chamber that you want to hear from constituents. Your statement is a bold-faced lie and you shouldn't be trusted. Item six point three, this council wants to change meetings, a meeting start time and end time. Perhaps if this council could actually start meetings on time, not interrupt members of the community, fight with each other or pontificate from the dais, our meetings wouldn't take forever. In closing, the behavior of the mayor and this council is atrocious. You are disrespectful, demeaning, arrogant, egotistical fools. I'm embarrassed to tell people you live here due to the behaviors and attitudes portrayed from that dais. You all should be ashamed of yourself.
The next speaker is Jody Boyd. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Jody Boyd, District One in Westminster. And I too am one of these citizens who unexpectedly found myself dropped into closed session where I remained for approximately five to seven minutes, enough time to listen in and also observe the PowerPoint slide deck that was open on the left side of my screen. And you know what? It absolutely supports what the Luang family and all of their supporters and the sea of white and red T-shirts before you are saying. This is absolutely incredible. Why on earth would the city of Westminster be trying to steamroll over a small business, in fact, a minority-owned business? Small businesses constitute the bulk of the businesses in Westminster. You should be supporting them. In fact, don't you remember when we received funding due to COVID? And the city council voted to allocate that funding and a lot of the bailouts indeed to small businesses in Westminster? And I believe that our now honorary mayor also benefited from that as a small business owner. In fact, of all of you sitting on the dais, how many of you are small business owners or got your career starts working for small businesses? Your behavior is abhorrent. If this is the best you can do to generate and find new ways to generate revenue for Westminster is to trample over a small business, you're just, this is just foolish and you deserve to be sued. In fact, look at all the supporters that took the time to show up, and I'm sure there are many more supporters. Imagine what we would contribute to the family legal fund so they can just sue the pants off Westminster. So I hope that you listened to every single voice and read every T-shirt in front of you because you know what? We, the people, we are united and we're going to unite against you. Thank you.
The next speaker, the next speaker on Zoom is Twee Bo. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Yeah, first of all, I want to send a message to Amy West. I think you need to go back to kindergarten, elementary to learn manner, waiting for public to to speak first and then, you know, you can vote or you can have comment. And to City Council Nam Quang Nguyen, you still go on to trust media and mad mouth about your colleague, Manzo, City Council Man Manzo and City Council Kimberly Ho about they cutting the gift card. Last meeting, Kristen Corden already made the statement that the city decided to hold off to have, to have the right process so that it's fair to everyone. And you heard that and you still going to trust media and make lies about, you know, City Council Manzo and City Council Kimberly Ho. And you square in, you, you, you told everyone that you, you want to unite it to move forward city of Westminster to a better place, but why you still doing that? I mean, I'm watching every video of trust media. And as a mayor pro tem, you know, you went in there and go in on today and advertising all these pots and pans, you know, it's, it's embarrassing. So that's all I want to say.
Mayor, at this time, that concludes all the speakers, both present and on Zoom.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight and voice your opinions. We, the council, hear you, heard you, are clear, loud and clear. And we will discuss and make decision as long as it's fair for everyone. That's what we are aiming for. So again, thank you for voicing your opinion. And before I, as promised, Councilmember West, that for your comment after, after the public comments, before that, can I, I know that City Attorney also want to mention a little bit, so about the, about the billboard. So go ahead, your turn.
Yes, and first of all, let me just, for the council's benefit, especially since we have some new council members. The way the Brown Act works is we discuss items that are on the agenda. There is an exception that allows brief responses to comments that are made by the public, but we shouldn't get into a back and forth discussion. So if, if there is a need in a particular situation, I usually advise just hold your comments and then respond during council comments, but if there's a strong need to respond right away, a brief response is legally permissible. It should be brief. What I wanted to say was I just want to provide a brief clarification on, on this billboard. I, I appreciate everyone who's come out tonight to express their opinions. I'm very limited in what I can say because Mr. Luang, he has retained legal counsel who has already communicated with the city, so I'm trying to limit what I'm saying. What I can say though is that the city has done nothing in this case to target any particular single person or billboard, nor does the city have anything to do with the city trying to compete. The city's actions to date were taken because of a need to comply with a mandatory state law. It affects a number of billboards in the city, not just one billboard that you're talking about. All of the billboards that issue were authorized under the former redevelopment law, which was granted an exception to certain billboards from the normal rules that govern them. Now, in two thousand and eleven, the state legislature took action to dissolve redevelopment agencies across the state. And the legislature then passed a number of state statutes that told cities across the state what they had to do to dissolve the Westminster Redevelopment Agency and their redevelopment agencies. And one of those laws that was passed in, it was in two thousand and thirteen, October of two thousand and thirteen, told the city what must happen with these particular billboards. It's Business and Professions Code fifty-two seventy-three. That, that, that code mandates that these billboards, which were granted an exception to the general rule that was not given to other billboards, must be removed. But the legislature understood that they did not want to hurt the owners of these billboards. So what the legislature did was in that state law, which you can read for yourself, they provided for a ten-year amortization period. What this means is that when it was passed in two thousand and thirteen, the state allowed these billboards to remain in place for an additional ten years, up until January first of two thousand and twenty-three. for an additional ten years, up until January first of 2023. But on January first of 2023, the state law says that those billboards must be removed. That is the state legislature telling us. That is not the city. So it was important for you to understand the city, the city is merely seeking to carry out state law, what it's being told it must do. Now, that being said, I want to be clear. Yes, it is true in that state law, as has been mentioned by some of the speakers tonight, that the law does provide for some limited possibilities of a short-term extension. But that is something that the council cannot just grant. The state law has some very specific findings that need to be made. Moreover, in evaluating this request, the city needs to very carefully treat everyone the same. Most importantly, the granting of an extension is subject to Caltrans approval. So be assured that we're simply trying to follow the law. So this is one of the issues that the city is dealing with. That's one issue completely and separately apart from the second issue. The second issue is whether or not some other sign could or should be authorized to be built on that same site. Now, if one is going to be allowed, it's not going to be under the current law, because that's been invalidated. The city, if it would allow one, must follow the standard process for billboard approvals, which includes public hearings, which obtain input from the surrounding people, property owners, and the people that live there. It also includes approval from the state, which are completely beyond the city's control. So I would just ask the public for patience as the city seeks to work these issues out. I can assure you that the city will follow a fair and impartial process in processing each situation. And let me conclude by saying once again that nothing the city is doing or is planning to do is in competition with Mr. Wang's billboard. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. This is the time for the council to, to the business. So the public comments already done. So Councilmember West, you just heard from the city attorney that there is a litigation or Mr. Jacko already seek for the legal action. So I don't know whether you want to comment about this, or you comment on something else. So go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, first and foremost, thanks for all of you guys come out and do public speaking, because public speaking, I heard, is the most frightened thing the public would ever have to do. And so I applaud you guys for speaking up and sharing your concerns. And I want to applaud Jacko, your two kids, for speaking up, because I have three boys. They're eleven, eight, and seven, and I'm raising them to speak their mind and to speak what their concerns are, and no one should silence them in a cordial matter, a respectful matter. So I appreciate that, you know, your kid, both of your girls came up and speak, and keep up the good work, okay? All right.
All right. If there is nothing, no comments from the council, then I would like to move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a rule call, vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific item to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by, uh,
A second.
Okay, by Councilmember Menzo and second by Councilmember Ho. Rule call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and that is to approve the consent calendar in its entirety as approved. Motion made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next is regular business, five point one, award of contract for the CB, CDBG twenty-two dash twenty-three street improvement. Project number CDBG twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
I second, but before we vote, I just have a question for staff. In regards to the approval, the award of contract to the lowest and responsible bidder, that's kind of a new, shall I say, new word inserted there. It used to be, what, the lowest bidder? Is it now the lowest and most responsible bidder? Is that new? It says responsible, so I'm not sure.
Responsive.
Responsive.
I can respond to that.
It wasn't even the word responsive wasn't there before.
I can respond to that.
Okay.
Under state law, we're required to publicly bid contracts.
Right.
And for public work-type contracts, we're required to grant them to the lowest responsible bidder. It's a state law requirement, so it's the lowest bidder, but it's also, the bidder has to be responsible so to demonstrate a certain level of responsibility.
Now, I don't, I don't remember the word responsible being in the previous, like, six years, seven years. You know, anytime you, you, you bring them up, yeah, for, like, any of these bids. And, you know, any of the contracts. So I was just wondering, if that is something new, okay. So that is not, nothing new. It's just that you decide to mention it in this one.
May I stop you for a minute? Councilmember Menzo just mentioned that, would you please take the conversation outside, because we're still doing business here, city business? Thank you very much for your understanding. So I'm sorry, back to you, City Attorney.
Okay, so is it responsible or responsive? Because
Those are actually two things that are, that are separate. They have to be responsive, meaning they have to comply with exactly what was requested in the RP, you know, provide certain information that is mandatory. But responsible has to do with not being a business that's, you know,
Not responsible.
Yeah, maybe typically that means they've demonstrated in other situations where they are incompetent or, you know, unable to do work properly. So there's a burden of proof there, but you can't just arbitrarily reject somebody's being non-responsible. You'd have to actually give them a reason.
We'll just make sure that the bid items that come out will have consistent language.
Yeah, and you know, the reason is, someone can be, let's say, somebody could be the lowest, because all this time, I understand the law is that you have to choose the lowest bidder. But I could say, okay, that's a lowest bidder, but that's not the most responsible bidder, and that's not the most responsive bidder. Wow, that's still the lowest bidder. So I, you know, it only makes sense that when you give a contract or award a contract to a bidder, the lowest bidder, well, it better be one that's all of the above, the responsive and responsible. So I'm, you know, for me, I, I'm quite confused. So is that really the law? Because this is the first time I heard of that.
Yeah, it is. And staff goes through that analysis. And frequently, they'll, they'll involve my office when they're trying to evaluate, is this a situation where we can deny this bidder because of certain facts? Such as a prior contract they did with the city where they ran up a bunch of change orders arbitrarily and, and created problems. And now we're trying to determine, do we really, is this a responsible bidder that we want to deal with again?
Well, I, I know in the past, I think my, even like six years ago, there was a situation, another bid, a bidding process, another contract, and we always look at contracts. And when I said, you know, not all lowest bids are going to be the best bids, and, and I still stand by that. So we shouldn't go, we should, shouldn't always go for the lowest bidder, because the lowest bidder is not the best bidder. But I was then told that the lowest, you know, according to the law, we have to go with the lowest bidder. So if there are other variables, now the lowest bidder, but then the most responsible and the most responsive, this is the first time I've heard of those three variables in one place. So can I, can you just come back with that, just to enlighten me or verify?
Bottom line, the number one priority is lowest bid.
Hmm.
But there are some factors that you can look at, but the burdens on the city in those situations to justify why the person with the lowest bid should not be granted. So it's not like
I agree, the lowest bidder should not always be grant. And that was my argument before. And so I was told otherwise, and that's why today I was a bit confused when you insert those two or one other variable, and that was the responsible, and then you verbally said responsive. So I get it. For this one, I seconded.
I think the law is to protect the lowest bidder and then give them reason why we don't want them, you know? And I think that's right, and I think that's good to protect the lowest bidder.
Also, I, I would like to clarify.
I'm not sure I understood that comment, but we'll let that go. I seconded.
Yes, I understand that, uh,
Thank you.
Uh, motion was by, uh, Councilmember Menzo, and you seconded. But I do have a question for staff. Is a single motion to approve all three items there, A, B, C, or just single, single item? All three?
All three.
Okay, good. So that motion is seconded under the law. Go ahead and call a rule call, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and that is for all three of staff recommendations, which include approve award of contract to the lowest and responsible bidder in the amount of five hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to contractors, Inc., and that all other bids be rejected and authorize a ten percent contingency in the amount of fifty-four thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars for potential change orders, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. The motion was made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho. Councilmember West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Five point two, authorize change, changes to police officer recruit classification status and salary.
Have a, have a report?
Yes. Can we have staff report, please?
There we go. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're going to discuss the changes to the police officer recruit classification status and salary. So the recommended action is to authorize converting the police officer recruit classification from its current status, which is a part-time, to a full-time status, and offer benefits for these positions. We also are requesting to increase the police officer recruit salary to fifty, sorry, five thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars a month, which is the median salary when benchmarked against the twelve surrounding cities that we have benchmarked all of our other compensation studies against. Move the officer recruit position to the Westminster Police Officers Association. This was requested as originally from the Police Administration and the WPOA. And then adopt a resolution, the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, amending resolution number five one three three, the memorandum of understanding for the Westminster Police Officers Association, WPOA, employees amending Exhibit A salary schedule for the Westminster Police Officers Association, WPOA, and modifying the classification plan for the period of July one, twenty twenty through and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So why is this change being recommended? Most cities are facing very challenging times when it comes to recruiting for our police officers. Right now, currently, Westminster pays twenty-two seventy-seven per hour, and we, we offer no hiring bonuses. Surrounding cities are offering high, higher hiring, they're offering hiring bonuses and higher wages. Most police recruits start off full-time in our, in our competitive cities, which means they get medical, dental, vision, paid time off, and holiday. Right now, we currently offer no additional benefits. And we're missing an opportunity to find high potential candidates. For example, our military veterans, most of our veterans, when they are coming out of the military, have families, have been getting benefits and have a certain wage, and when we offer them twenty-two seventy-seven, seven, seven an hour, and we are not offering any benefits, they tend to not want to come to Westminster. So we would like to recommend these changes so that we can reach out to these qualified candidates. I know this is a little challenging to read. But just for the, for the newer council members, we did a, we have done an extensive comp study that we completed last summer. In that comp study, we comped against twelve cities that we agreed we would use in that benchmarking. And so I saw those same parameters and benchmarked our current police recruit. So as you can see right now, the, the wage equals thirty-eight thirteen a month, and we're recommending the fifty-two seventeen oh three. So current and future recruitment and retention dilemmas. So seventy-five percent of our patrol division have seven years or less of experience. Sixty-two percent of all sworn have ten years or less of police experience. And eleven sworn staff will be eligible for retirement in twenty twenty-three, eight of which are currently supervisors. So as you can see, that would leave a big void. So the fiscal impact for this change would be approximately fifty thousand dollars a year and will be charged to the police permanent wages account. In conclusion, so approving these changes for the police officer recruit, recruits classification and salary schedule will make us more competitive so that we can go out there and find a good quality candidate for our, our community and our residents. Okay, any questions?
Um, Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead. I have a question. On your staff report, it says nothing about, we don't offer any hiring bonuses, is that?
So we don't offer hiring bonuses for recruits. We do have a lateral bonus, but not for recruits at the moment.
That was my, I, I had heard we did, but, okay, and then as far as inserting, having joined the WPOA, does that happen instantly, or is it happened like after they complete the academy or make the, or actually go, you know, when, when does it happen? Right away?
So they would join the WPOA right away as an associate member, but Alan is going to give me the correct term.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. To answer your question, Councilmember Manzo, yes, it would join our POA as an associate member. Since they are currently enrolled in an academy, they have not completed or become a full-time sworn officer at that time. And so associate membership is allowed per our bylaws.
And as far as benefits to the associate member, what are they differ from? Or how do they differ from self-permanent?
So for associate members, their dues are obviously reduced, but it, it allows them access to potential legal representation if needed and other, affords them other benefits. In the academy environment, they generally do not have contact with the public, so some of those concerns are, are at a lesser level than officers that are currently out in the field.
That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Any, any other questions from the council? Now, I do have questions for you, please, our staff. How many, how many officers that we, we need to hire at this point in order for us to, you know, to fully control of, of the situation?
So in the eighteen months, roughly eighteen months that have been up in the professional standards unit, we have hired twenty-one officers. Our current functional number of officers at the agency is at seventy-eight, when you remove our officers that are currently in the academy, and also injured IOD status.
Seventy-eight right now, and then what, what number are you trying to reach?
That's our functional number, our, based off of council direction, and our chief, it's ninety-two is what we're trying to, to hit.
Okay. Next question for staff, according to, I don't know that you are ready, but what is the budget that we allocate for their, for the WPT right now? In percentage-wise, from their, from their city budget? In percentage-wise, from their, from their city budget?
Evening. I believe total safety, but would be police and fire is seventy percent, or in the high seventies. It would take me a second to look up the, the police budget.
I thought police and fire was like more like seventy-five percent, seventy-six percent.
I was going to guess seventy-seven.
Not seventy.
Right, in the, in the top seventies. I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head. Shoot, I'm sorry. This is all messed up.
Well, let's say there is seventy-five percent. I, I, I heard that a number of times already. So if we have to reach to the number that they need to have for the city, so we are going to go up to what, eighty percent of the budget of the city budget, or?
No, that total is already budgeted. So the positions are unfilled, but they're already included in the budget. So to get to fully staffed, it wouldn't be an increase to the current budget, it would just be filling the already authorized positions.
Thanks for the clarification, and I, I want to restate that I am support, in support of the police, but I want to make sure that we do it, you know, we do our business, city business, so that we can properly, you know, allocate the money so we don't spend over spending. Any questions?
Just a quick question, thank you.
Thank you.
We're not, I just want to make a point. I'm sure that number may seem high to some public, but I don't know if Aaron or police or chief, I mean, we're pretty typical, well, I shouldn't say typical, because we're under, we're under staff and under, we don't offer as much as other cities do, but as far as the budget's concerned, that's pretty typical with public safety takes the majority, a good chunk of the budget. I mean, that's no different from many other cities, correct?
Yes, councilmember, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. That's correct. The entire comparison with cities that already offer that and more. We're just trying to stay competitive so we can hire police officers, you know, it's just that time in our country's history where there's a lot of people that do not want to be police officers, and we just can't take anyone off the street and make them a police officer. There are state guidelines, rules, and laws that pertain to our hiring that are governed by the California Police Officer Standards and Training Commission, and it takes a lot to hire a police officer and even more to train them, and if we're not competitive, we won't have any.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this, I, I think this is a good, I mean, I wish we can do more, but at the time, I think this is a good thing to do to make us more competitive and hopefully attract more recruits to come and join us. So I think it would be a good tool to have in our, in our toolbox to try to sway members to come to our city, so. I'm definitely in agreement, so I would motion to approve as recommended.
I would like to second, but before I do, we, if I could just make a comment, I, I would like to commend our HR director. This is just amazing because, you know, I just want to let everybody know that it's, it really is difficult to recognize the moves or the strategy that it takes to recruit. So, you know, by recognizing that we have to convert the part-time positions to full-time status, and including benefits in what it takes, and it's going to take that, it's going to take all of those things to attract new officers, new recruits. So that's really, you play a very important role, and I'm sure, I was thinking, do you make this decision on your own? But I'm sure you work with our chief, our police chief as well. So I know our police chief doesn't like to take the credit, but I know, you know, that's where credit is due as well. So I really thank you for recognizing that, and I do agree that that's what it takes these days. And, you know, to recruit good recruits, and we could just can't take somebody off the street. We, if we need to be competitive, this is how we're going to be competitive. So with that, I would like to second.
Before we vote on that, I have a follow-up question. Go, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and just one more comment on it. Thank you, councilmember. The real heavy lifting really is done by our HR director and Commander Washida, pulling all statistics, getting the data from other police agencies on, on what they're paying and what their benefits are, and making sure that information is absolutely correct. I, I do want to say that the question was raised, Mayor, that how much of the budget is the police department specifically? And it's fifty-five percent of the budget that goes to law enforcement specific, when you take fire out of the public safety line item, just police is fifty-five percent.
Appreciate for your clarification there. The follow-up question, this is, I know that you're asking the council to approve additional for recruiting the part-time to full-time position. Did you take into account that, you know, this increase here is going to cover the next several police official that we are hiring, or I just don't want to, the next time you come back, because we increased the five thousand dollars, now we, we need to, we need to, you know, to rebudget for the, for the police. I want, I want to make sure that.
Yes, so I worked very closely with Aaron Backs to come up with this number. We already have recruits that are in the academy or set to go into the academy. So there is a portion of their salary that was already accounted for, so this is just the additional that we're anticipating. And remember, they're only in the academy for six months at a time, so that's why the number seems so low, but it's a short period before they become police officer ones.
Yeah, I know the question, follow-up for the chief. I know that you mentioned, you know, several meeting before that you have difficult times of getting, you know, the police official to the city of Westminster, you know, most likely that we, if we approve the budget today, it's probably easier for you. But have you got any progress as of several months that you've been looking into that?
Mayor, as far as recruitment goes?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, we've had a lot of progress. Our numbers are climbing. We're getting closer to reaching our allotted amount of police officers, although it sounds kind of far away from the numbers that Commander Washida had, had advised. It, that number does include the officers that were injured on the job and are off recovering. Unfortunately, it is a dangerous job, and we do have a number of officers that are still off and not eligible to be counted in our field strength. But we have made a lot of progress in the last year. I would add, it's a moving target. It's very difficult to compete with some of our neighboring agencies, as, as we all know. In fact, some of you even knew one of our sergeant-at-arms that left for another police agency that paid significantly amount more than, than we do, and it's just a very, very interesting time all across the country in law enforcement because of the lack of qualified candidates, and then all of us are after them, so.
The reason I asked that question, just, just so that you know that we have numbers of, you know, incident happened during the, the, I mean, the holidays. As, as a matter of fact, you heard it from one of their speaker today. And we, we want to make sure that we have enough police officers to take care of the problem, and hopefully that you, we can do that in time so that we can, you know, and by the way, I asked staff, remember, I asked for quarterly update from the crime statistic. It's going to be next month. It's going to be the first one of the year, so I hope that you can come back with the number for us.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I do a follow-up?
Please, yes, please.
So the follow-up question on hiring, are you guys going into the veteran community as well, our military, because they're perfect to be on, you know, next police in the city of Westminster?
Yes, we go into all different types of atmospheres, military, college, veterans. We tap the military before they even become discharged from the military. But so are all the other police agencies, and everyone is hiring. And a number of agencies offer just greater incentives, better pay, better benefits, may, a more stable financial environment, which is attractive to people that are usually interested in these kind of professions. So it's a recruitment war, and that's why you'll probably see not only this item, but other items to keep us competitive in making sure we get qualified candidates for police officer, because we, we're not allowed to lower our standards. In fact, it's unlawful for us to, like I said, the California Police Officer Standards and Training Commission sets those standards for us, that we have to make sure they, they meet. So that qualified candidate is what we're after, and unfortunately, so is everyone else.
Exactly. Thank you for verifying that.
Any other questions? If not, Rukovol, please. We have motion on the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and that is to, to authorize converting the police officer recruit position from part-time to full-time status, including benefits, and increase police officer recruit salary to five thousand two hundred seventeen monthly, and to move police officer recruit position to the Westminster Police Officers Association, and to adopt a resolution entitled the Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, amending resolution number five one three three, the memorandum of understanding for Westminster Police Officers Association, employees, amending Exhibit A salary schedule for the Westminster Police Officers Association, and modifying the classification plan for the period of July first, twenty twenty, through and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor, motion carries five zero.
Right, five point three, reviewed process and placement on the agenda items. So this, this item is proposed by Councilmember West.
Yes, five point three. You know, I think it's important to have two members, you know, bringing item up, and I think, you know, we hear some of the concerns of the resident in the city of Westminster here. You know, I talked to this city attorney as well to make sure that we don't, you know, violate the Brown Act, and it's important for us to legally to make sure. So I think with two members coming together on an issue, wanting to put before this, the agenda, I think it's important because they will, you know, analyze it and see the pros and cons and whatnot, and I think that's good. Two bring is better than one. And that also saves time and resources, as, you know, you guys know, every minute we have in the council meeting, the money, the city from the general fund is paying for that. So we want to be fugal with the money that we have, and I think that's good to have this agenda on and approved today.
Any other comments from?
Yeah, I can go next. Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
Yeah, I, I really don't understand this, this item as far as, one, I don't think it's been a, it's been a problem for any council member since they've been back to the way originally was. I mean, I mean, it was easy to get this agenda item placed, and it's not really, it's not, hasn't been a problem, I don't think. I asked staff if it's been an issue, and there really hasn't been an issue, the two Thursday rule prior has been, you know, complied with to make sure that they give staff enough time to look into the, the request and work with that council member to bring it in, in a time when, when staff and that council member feel they had enough time to do all the research, so that hasn't been a problem, and when, back, I'm not sure when it was, but back when it was changed to, to require council majority vote to place an item on the agenda, it was a very divisive thing to do, was a way to kind of stifle one council member in particular. And that, to me, that just created even more division in the community. And this is something that we were supposedly striving to do, is create unity. And I just think this count, this agenda item, not to be any disrespectful to Councilmember West, but it's just bringing back old, all the issues that just became so divisive, not on, just on the council, but on, in the community. We're now, we're back to, we're currently now full district voting, so as one county, one resident mentioned, and it is true, you know, we answer to our constituents, and and if there's, there's an issue in that particular district, or, and that, that council member is being, you know, approached by their, their constituents, it's very difficult to, very sad to see that that council member may struggle to bring that issue forward and, and really be a voice for their community. And the other concern, as it was before, that you can try your best, and you may have the, your good intentions to make sure you're complying with the Brown Act, but if you have a really important issue that you're, you're really passionate about, and you start shopping your idea around where you just violated the Brown Act by speaking to more than one other council member, and there's no really way to really prevent that, it's just basically on the honor system. And it's just, it's just so open to so many bad things, so since there hasn't really been an issue, I just don't see why we're going down this road again.
Well, I think in the proof of the last four years, city council meeting, I've seen the chaos and people putting agenda on where we have to talk, and we wasting people's time and the city council resources and the staff. And I think it's important for us to go back to that, which has happened way, way during Marjorie Rice, and I think this agenda has been on before, so, you know, why not go back to what really worked? And I think this reduced the time and helped us with the resources, and it's basically more of a admin kind of getting the order within a council meeting, so I think, you know, if I can ask to move this forward today to vote on.
Okay, at this point here, I understand, I heard it from Councilmember Manzo as well as Councilmember West. I'd like to, you know, have the time for other council members to speak up before you could respond. Is there any, anyone?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Would you like to go first? You can. Oh, thank you. Yeah, in the name of unity, we're trying to start a new chapter, start a new year on the right foot, and I really think we, I would like to say ditto with the comment by Councilmember Carlos Manzo. That, you know, in the last few years, it hasn't been much, we really haven't observed any problems with agendizing, doing it the way we've been doing the last couple of years. And, you know, now we're split into four different districts. This is the first year that we're actually now in four districts versus before. So every district has its very unique demographic. So I believe the need of one district is going to be different than another. So I think out of respect for other council members and their constituents, I think if we table this, and being that it is only your second meeting, if in the future we see any problems, and we Uh if in the future we see any problems and we, if any problems arise, we can always revisit it and that would be my recommendation. But, you know, out of respect for your, for council member West's um agenda. I just think that maybe we can just table it for now and keep observing, and if we see problems, we can always bring it back.
Councilmember Nguyen, uh I mean Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, uh Mayor Nguyen. Um just going back like a couple of years. Um I personally. Um see that. Um. A few council members just reckless uh recklessly throwing items on an agenda. Uh just for um like a personal gain, show off, you know, trying to show off something. Or just trying to uh resolve the issue with, you know, residents or. Um, you know, the media that they don't want to. Um they they don't like, okay? So uh in response to um, in the other hand, respond to um council, councilman. Manzo and councilwoman Ho, I think. Even though we got elected by district, you know? But we represent the whole city. We are here to serve the entire city. So if you are doing, you you bring, you bring in the a good item on a agenda. So other people, other council member going to support you, you know? So with that, I think uh I agree with uh councilman the West.
Okay, uh are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Um I was here for the last four years, I know. First of all, I disagree with the council member Manzo and council member Ho. I have to say that we have disagreement, we respect, but we have the disagreement because the problem had been arise. And I can name specifically that we spent almost three hours to talk on the item that is not necessary. That none uh uh of it doing to the city business. A council, the previous council member brought in an item that talk about fake news. Okay, that fake news is going to be out there, you know, you deal with that out there, not here. And we spent three hours talking about it, how much it caused the city to do so. Okay, we need to be at, you know, the city business and we have a lot of issue and we have to stay up. You know, uh past the hours to 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 resolve the problem. We need to do it now in order to prevent of any things that happen again. And that might strongly uh urge the city council uh to think about it. And at the same time, you know, one person might think that this is good, but the other person always is good to have two, two people. To look at the items and agree on that, I don't see any problem with that. If we have a three people that I can see that that majority, I can understand, but the two people. Uh agree on the item and bring it up and and, you know, for the council to discuss. Uh I think is uh is the legitimate uh thing to do. Another thing is that, yes, we are now have a district, but then, like um Vice Mayor said. We are representing all the people in this city. We can discriminate from from this uh district to uh the the other district. And whatever we spend time in here, we are representing for all people, not the people from the, from our district. So with that, uh I don't know that you have the motion or?
I motion to move forward.
I second that.
Okay, so that we have the motion and second on the floor. Can you re- um repeat your motion again, please?
Mayor, can I, can I just have?
No, I I'm asking her to repeat her motion first and then and then your turn.
Okay.
Okay, um council member West, go ahead and repeat your motion.
Yes, I motion to move five uh point three forward to have two member of the council place an item on the agenda.
I second that.
Now, uh.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, um like I said, um. Just, it's just funny to me, I guess there's nothing I want to, I'm gonna do, say, can say to change anybody's mind on here, that's pretty obvious. It's just a an observation, how funny that some of the comments by my colleagues here about unity and moving the city forward and then. I originally thought, and I was gonna lean over to the mayor and, you know, and say that was a pretty good thing you did at the beginning as far as. Uh right before public comments to say, I would have needed to stop all this, all this nonsense on the council and then all the bickering back and forth. And then the respecting, respectful of the uh the members of the community with their comments and then. We didn't even last one min, one meeting and you you were making comments to the public, council member West was making publics to the comments, to the public. And then here we are with these divisional uh items on the agenda, so it's just very. Um I mean, not to say in disrespectfully, but it's just a very disheartening and kind of very hypocritical. Um you guys know me, I've never really, I never brought any wacky items forward. I've always just had to deal with what's on the agenda and and I think we have a pretty responsible council here. That we can all uh be adults and bring in uh items is gonna be productive and. As council member West said, why don't we observe? Why don't we give this new council a chance? Let's prove until they, until um council member West made a comment prior. That why don't we give a chance to see how things happen, how things work out? Um and give him an an opport, person an opportunity to either succeed or fail or or prove themselves, why don't we do that? Why don't we do what we all been saying, it's a new council, it's a new day, let's move forward. Why are we back to this, this kind of divisional conversation that we've had for many years, now we're back again? That's it.
Councilmember Menzo, I just feel like you're bringing up division and none of us want division, right? But the thing is that it's not about division, it's about you don't agree with this, cause you don't want to talk to another person. You want to put whatever agenda, like I said, two is better than one. Two rope tie up together is stronger than one, we all know that. So the fact that, you know, not wasting the people's time and our staff resources, I think that's perfect. And I I I know in the last four years, I've seen the council meeting, you know, I've seen what you guys put on, you know, I watch you guys. And I've seen it, a- and you can't, you can't lie to that, there's fact, it's on record, right? Let's go back if you want to, you can look at it, but the thing is that, you know, it's very important to. Two mind is better than one and respecting our staff, respecting the voters. Who listen and stay here till one in the morning with us, I think it's respectful, orderly and doing the city business.
Okay. Go ahead and vote.
Uh I'm sorry, um.
Call the question.
I I I will do that, that's what I'm about to say.
Yeah, there's call for.
Before I call for questions, I'd like to give the a council member who uh Ho and council, um Vice Mayor Nguyen. Another chance to go ahead and comment, if you don't have, then I call for questions.
Uh I thank you for giving me the opportunity. Um but as I stated, really, we as a council, we are a new council. As council member Menzo said, it's a new day, it's a new council, it's a new year. Um let's try to work together, um and an example that was brought by uh Mayor G Charlie. Um that it was, you know, someone who brought fake news, it wasn't any of us on this council. So if we could just, you know, start on the right foot, give it a chance and as I said. Um I respect your agenda, um and I would just, you know, my suggestion is to table it. And we could revisit another time when we do see there's a need to do this. Thank you.
Because I mean Vice Mayor Nguyen, I'm sorry, I I need to get familiar with that.
Uh I just want to call for question.
Okay, I second it. So uh vote for call for questions.
Already had before, so.
Okay, well, he mentioned about it, then you want to second it?
Yeah, I second.
Let's go ahead and and make a council member Menzo as a motion uh and second by uh.
Here, um calling for the question, vote made by um council member Manzo, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. Um councilmember Fan West?
Wait, this is to table it, right?
No, no, this is to.
To end a discussion.
Yeah, stop the discussion, yes, I agree, yes, vote.
Councilmember Manzo? Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yeah, go ahead and call, uh call, roll call for please.
Thank you, Mayor, and that motion was made by councilmember Fan West, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and that was. Uh to approve, to have two council members um to be required to place an item on the agenda. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three two, Mayor.
Okay, uh moving on to five point four. And we also have five point five addition to uh the council today. So five point four, consider an implementation plan for distribution of gift cards. For Westminster First Grocery Assistance Program. And authorize the purchase order to Perfect Gift Corporate. Uh for the purchase of Visa gift cards for fiscal year of twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. So um may I, is there anything? Is there any request from the council for staff report?
Yes, I would like the staff report, because we have three options that I think we need to listen to, which ones is the. The most, the, it's gonna give more more help to the community, and that's the goal here, is to help the community as much as possible. So.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to present the item before you regarding the Westminster First Grocery Assistance Program. Um just a little bit of background, as you know, this program was approved on the November ninth city council meeting to support residents who have been impacted by COVID nineteen. Um shortly after that, we began distribution to of um approximately nine hundred and fifty gift cards. Um there was definite demand for the program and we, it exceeded staff's capacity at that time and. Pretty much brought daily operations to a halt. Um and residents encountered long waiting times and were got. They were upset with the process that we were implementing, unfortunately. Um I worked with staff and we developed three options to implement a program. The goal is to create a plan that's equitable while ensuring residents have a positive experience when dealing with our department. The first option is a lottery system. This is similar to what the city implemented with the Rental Assistance Program through Westminster Cares in two thousand twenty. We will accept applications, um and we will, they can submit those in person at either the. Senior Center, the Family Resource Center, or Community Services, or by email. Um we would accept those for a period of, it's about two weeks, January thirtieth through February ninth. And then we'll involve um a random selection, so we'll number each of those applications and draw, draw those numbers accordingly. Um that will happen the week of February twentieth, and then notification and distribution will follow that the week of February twenty seventh. Those that are selected would then be notified, we'll call them, we'll let them know that their application was selected in lottery. And they could return in per person and bring their proof of identity, which matches their application and their receipts for.
I I'd like to follow up on that.
Sure.
Uh with the three options that you are putting on for agenda today. Um the previous uh way of distribution, which is first come, first served, still available.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that the the council know about it, that we don't have to lock into the three options that that you recommended.
No, these are just three options that we were able to um come up with, to implement a process, have a discussion and. Decide on where we should.
Since I am, you know, um I I I'd like to continue. Uh first come, post, you know, I know that uh it was working out okay before, except for the the timing. Uh that staff have to deal with the large number of crowd when they come in. But uh, you know, people respond to uh the 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 needs. Um and having uh, you know, I think that. The problem that we have here is somehow that staff need to work out their schedule. So that they can allocate the time, enough time to process those uh uh application.
Sure.
I I, you know, I don't believe in uh going by district. The reason I said that is because I know that I live in the same uh district as uh council member West. I've been going around talking to a lot of people, they said, I don't need it. Okay, there's no point that we need to, you know, we need to 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 give it to the uh those people who don't need. And I was talking, you know, as I was talking, it was said, I encourage people that if you don't need it, let have the people who need that. Um that amount, you know, uh that gift, like me. I am sorry to to tell you, but I am senior and I'm overqualified, but then still. We are not going to apply for it, we are not gonna do anything, so. I want to make sure that, you know, we give it to the people who need it, because they need it, they be there to 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 receive it. Um so, you know, uh I I strongly um uh. You know, uh I'm strongly to advocate to um to have first come, first served, you know, it's fair to everyone. You know, if you need it, you come, if you don't need it, then you come later, then that's, you know, is the end. That's, that's my comment. Go next.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. Um let me try to understand, so you're still gonna, you're still thinking of doing a first come, first served? If no matter if if council chooses one, option one or two or three, is that what you just said?
I think what the mayor's referring to is most similar to option two is an intake day. Where we would do a similar process that we've done with the first round. Um we would accept their applications and we do believe that those who are coming and waiting in lines are those in need. We, yeah, we, so that would be similar to option two.
Yeah, yeah, and then, I know I cut, we cut you off here, um um out of the three options, I mean. Can you run by option three? I mean, it seems to, seems to me that there's a lot of opportunity in option three. To make some real, real impactful contact with folks to to offer, offer them some. In the, uh you know, additional services besides just a gift card by doing a a fair. Is that what you're calling it, you're calling it a resource fair?
Yeah, a senior Saturday resource fair where we would try to bring some other service organizations that are local, that can support needs that. Those who need a hundred dollar gift card likely have, you know, maybe need for transportation, maybe needs for other food um programs. Um legal aid, healthcare. Um and that way they can have an experience there while also processing the hundred dollar gift card. Um you know, that is an undertaking, that's an event.
That's a big event.
Yeah, and it's not that, these are services the senior center offers regardless on a daily basis. If someone comes in and needs a referral for medical assistance, we do that. And if they're on a first come, first served basis, or we're doing a lottery system and we realize they have needs, like, we're gonna connect them.
But if we do, if we do uh uh option three, it still will be a first come, first served, but. It would be a a an event where we have, like you just mentioned, where we have other, you know, um agencies. Or other, you know, providers that can off, sit there and speak to these uh individuals. About more more services and also too, you mentioned um that you would speak to them about joining and signing up to the senior center.
Yes, we're we're doing that anyway.
Yeah, you are, but but I'm saying it's instead of sitting here and just be reactive. You know, do it first come, first served and then just sit there and try to, you know, act, react to each individual's needs, but if we have an actual big event. It seems to me that would be more organized and be more, more impactful, more helpful to the community as a whole to have an actual big event. I would, I would think that that would be most beneficiary, the most for the, you know, the community. I would think that that would be, that will, and it's still gonna be a first come, first served, it's just gonna be a big day event.
I just want to follow up to clarify when you, what you mean by intake day, is that one day or is several days?
It would be at your discretion, at the council's discretion and desire, um we could.
Because I don't think it's one day, it's fair for the people, for the senior people, uh some of them, they don't have the uh transportation. Some of them, they don't have the transportation, and they have to ask their family members to take them there. And, you know, what happened if that day they can't, you know, and these are the people who need that, you know, they couldn't get it. So I would say that, you know, you set out, if we go with option two, I would like to ask to, to have a period of time, you know, like a week time frame to have, to allow them to, to come in and, 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 you know, turn in their application.
You know what I was about to say is that I think it's very, we want to make sure our staff are available. Because last time you said, you know, is the staff were overwhelmed with people coming to get this a hundred dollar gift cards. Now, the thing is that I was thinking that if it, you know, the gift card is at the center, Senior Center, where they can just go there at their convenience, their time that they can get a ride there or transportation, however, that they can be there and, and with the verification, they can get that a hundred dollar gift cards. It cannot be like out in the open or bringing staff from outside. I think the location of where the Senior Center already are doing something similar to that. If we have the Senior Center operate and getting this a hundred dollar gift card, food card out to seniors who come in, I think that would make sense and help us with the, the time and availability of our staff.
Sure. So the Senior Center is open Monday through Friday. Have shortened hours on Friday where they close right after the lunch service. So doing that would impact staff, so we would try to find a day where, probably a Saturday, where we could open up the center and just process that. So where it's not impacting our lunch service or transportation service.
So Councilmember Fan West, just to add to that, that's actually what we did. So during the period in which we opened up, we had the FRC open, the Senior Center, and then on the other side of the corner, Community Services. So for that entire time, staff had, we, so we had long lines outside of the building in all of, in all of the lines and including the FRC. So, so that's actually what we did. The big problem is, it's like going to the DMV, right? Staff is actually processing the applications right there and then to try to get them, you know, their card, because yes, it's, it's true. A lot of these folks do not have transportation and they've, you know, they've got appointments, availability is a little bit tough. But standing in line for that period of time was very, you know, it wasn't very comfortable for them. And, and, and that's definitely what, you know, we, we don't want to have that, you know, we don't want to have that, that type of environment for this kind of distribution. But that's, that's pretty much what happened. Like, we're, we don't have enough staff to process all of the people that show up at the same time because it takes time to process them. And then there's also the language barrier. So I actually had to pull my staff. So Lynn, you know, my, my admin assistant, she was there the whole day, you know, getting yelled at by people who were just, you know, who, who were, for lack of a better term, a little bit impatient because the process was long. So, so yes, while it makes sense to be at the Senior Center, it's just this type of distribution is not supported in the way that we can support it, you know, like that. So, I mean, there are different options where if you don't want to impact an entire day, then there could be like a timeframe or hours that, you know, that someone can come that are designated hours during the day. So like the first, you know, or, or however many, right? Or make an appointment to come in during the first, like, three hours a day, two hours a day, whatever, whatever you guys decide. But, you know, but that having the intake day, maybe you do several intakes, you know, it's eight intake days. So like option two, that was the intake. We were looking at one Friday and we, we would be talking like twenty of us all out there. I would probably be out there processing applications with the rest of the staff. Like, that would be, you know, that would be an all-day dedicated thing. But it's, you know, I understand, it's hard. Sometimes people have appointments, they have, you know, they have other things that they need to do and can't get a ride, et cetera. So maybe it's several intake days, but a shorter period of time per day. So these are all options that, you know, that you are, you know, that we can definitely explore. We just know that the, the, you know, the, the biggest, you know, the biggest issue when it came to staffing the first time around was we just don't have enough people to halt operations at the Senior Center, the FRC, and, you know, Community Services while trying to process everybody, you know, in, in, in efficient manner.
City manager, you just, so it seems to me that the most efficient way to do this is to have a period, say, what, what did you suggest? January thirtieth through a week, right? You suggested a week or why don't, why don't we have a date where you have a week or week and a half, whatever, two weeks where folks can submit their applications, staff can process the application, and then like you mentioned, the folks who do qualify, then you call them all, then you all, they all show up on a given day that you tell them to give, come in and, and, and distribute it that way. That way staff is not overwhelmed with a large crowd. Give staff time to process those, those applications in with due time, due time. And then, and then, then set up a date with those folks to come in and pick up their card.
So one of, so one of the, so when this item was initially presented, one of the thoughts that we had in terms of trying to process the applications. So there, so there was clearly a need when, you know, when, when people started showing up. But one of the thoughts that we had was, you know, we could take an application and we can timestamp it and then, you know, put it, put it in the stack. And as we go through, it's, it's ultimately first come, first served as people are, you know, are, as people are turning them in. And so we had a thought that maybe it would be difficult for some of, you know, for some of the applicants to come back. And so we're like, if we can just process at that time and give them the card so they can take it and, you know, and, and, and get helped, you know, right away as opposed to waiting, you know, maybe a couple of days a week or whatever it was to process. That's, that's the thought of why we're processing and providing there and then. But alternatively, you know, we could go back to that system where we're accepting applications. It gives us time to go through them. They'll maybe take a little bit longer to receive their card, but, you know, we will find ways to get them the card or they can come, you know, back to City Hall. Many of them are, you know, members of the Senior Center, they come with the, you know, they come to our, you know, to our meals. And so they'll be here anyway, and that's, that's definitely another option.
But how do we, how do, that's pretty much what happened the last time when we got overwhelmed. There's no way to, how, how do, how do you prevent nine hundred people from showing up again?
Well, they'll, what they'll end up, what they'll end up doing is they will show up with their application. But instead of us sitting there or standing there, vetting through their application, looking at their receipt, entering it in the system right there and then, making sure that they're residents. We would just accept the application like we accept applications for, you know, any other submittal, right? For commissions, committees, or, you know, anything else of that matter. We would put it, you know, we would timestamp it, like we timestamp every other, you know, application that we get. And that would set the, you know, that would set the order in which we received it as staff. And so at that point, we can have staff go through, you know, methodically, look at all the applications. And then if it's something's approved, then it goes to the next step, which would be getting them the card. But we're not, we're not having a line of, of folks being outside waiting for their application get processed like the DMV.
I know, we just said that you can do it that then and there. If they give you the application, you're going to have them wait until you.
No, so that's what we did before. We didn't have them wait, or we, we had them wait. And they were waiting, and that, and, and that, that was the problem. They were waiting, they were, you know, waiting outside in the cold, waiting for their application get processed because we were sitting there, you know, reviewing the application and vetting. What we're saying now is people can walk in with their envelope, with, you know, with their application in it, with all their supporting documents in it, pre-filled, et cetera. And then staff at some point, maybe at the end of the day, we do, you know, we have a, a mass vetting party and you know, whatever, like there's, there's, you know, there, there are funds there that, as part of this, that the council did approve to help with our overtime costs to administer this, you know, that's something that we could do. Take, you know, take a few hours every day over a period of time and vet through the applications at that point. And that way it doesn't impact our operations.
City manager, may I ask Vanessa to verify how many staff you guys had last time to help with this process?
It's it was all of the Senior Center staff with the exception of our kitchen staff and our transportation. So one, two, three, four, five, six, my front desk staff and my support admin staff, seven, eight, nine, I'm going to say fifteen, at any given time.
And how many days that we, it, it take for process like about nine hundred applications?
Fifty, it was all, it two half-days, so a Thursday half-day, a Friday half-day that the Senior Center was open, and then the entire following Monday.
I personally believe that we are here to serve the community, especially to the seniors and veterans. So we have to do what we can in order to serve them. With that, I think that, you know, the excellent idea that we go with option two, except for the intake day. Instead of the making one intake day, we are going to have the multiple intake day and then limit the number of hours. That way we can, we, we can control. I don't think, I don't believe that, you know, we take the application and then come back and, and, and call them or, or, you know, call them back later, because now we are making them to make a multiple trip to come back. And we already know that it's difficult for the senior people to, to travel already. And we are not going to put, this is not much, to be honest with you. We are not going to, you know, I don't think that we should do, you know, put more burden on them when we are giving them just a limited amount, which is hundred dollars. So with that, I, I move to approve option two with several days intake. I will let that for the council to, I mean, for the staff to, to decide on that and, and inform the council members about what your decision is and then move on with that.
I second that. I just want to make a comment and I hope this, I hope this council follows it. The last time, I don't want to, is why that, what happened was, and, and we all know who it was, we don't want to get ahead of staff. Okay, we don't, staff was overwhelmed because staff wasn't ready, staff hadn't made any announcements that they were ready, that they even had purchased the cards. But please, let's work together with staff. We say we don't want, we, we all love our staff and we want to support them. Let's not do wrong by then by getting ahead of staff. Let staff get ready, do their job, make an announcement, and then councilmembers can, can, can make an, to, uh, make an announcement to constituents. Well, I, I wasn't, you know, please, it's just something, I don't want to, I, I don't want to hash out old things, but let's just forget the past and let's move forward and let's do things right as a team. Let staff figure everything they need to figure out, make their announcement that they're ready, and then us, as council, we can, you know, do our thing. If you want to do a post on your social media or whatever you may, you want to do, that's, you know, that at least we're working together as a group, together, supporting each other.
Councilmember, I, I, I thought, of course, okay. Councilmember Monzo, I don't know that you listened to my, my motion. Not only that we work with staff, we actually let the staff decide on the dates that they want to proceed. So basically, it's in their hands of deciding what days it's best for them. We are not going to tell them that, you know, you have to do it certain dates. So we are open for them to make a decision and inform us whether it's the interest item or, you know, on one way or the other, the other, just inform us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, since we got this from the federal twenty-three million dollars fund, and a lot has been split out to different apartment to help during the COVID relief, and we have helped. The last remaining is about three hundred thousand, which we already give some out in the early gift cards. So I think, you know, like what Mayor was talking about, that it's up to you guys discretion and the time that you guys are available and the date to let the public know, the senior folks to come. And plus, you know, it's the people's tax dollars anyway, and that's what we're giving back and those who are in need of it. And, and I, I think that's great that the council is doing that. And so I want to move this item forward, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. I thought that we have a motion taken on the floor already.
There is currently a motion with a second.
Yes, a real call for please.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by the mayor, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. And that is to adopt option number two with the amendment that it be several intake days to be determined by staff. Just read really quickly through here and make sure that we cover all the recommendations here. The gift cards through the Westminster First Grocery Assistant Program, revising. Are we including all of the additional items for clarification that are listed on the?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify the eligibility from per person, from household to per person. What we noticed in the first round is that, and, and we know this, seniors have unique housing needs. They may share a mobile home.
I, I can.
Same household. So per person would help those most vulnerable.
I can revise my motion to include as staff recommend this. And also to include the, what I said earlier, the option number two with the several intake days and staff decide on what period of time that the best for that schedule and come back with the interest item to the city council.
And, and then also to add the authorization for the purchase of the, the cards, the remaining cards.
Correct. So are you, are you okay to second that? Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you for that correction and amendment. So it will include option number two with the amendment of several intake days, as well as revising the program to per person eligibility instead of per household, and to authorize an increase of two hundred and twenty thousand for a total of three hundred and twenty thousand for the purchase of Visa gift cards for fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. That motion was made by the mayor, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next is the item that was added to the agenda today, urgency item. Before we move on urgency item, which is request to waive test, TEP parade entry fees for elementary, middle, and secondary high school and district. I would like to take this moment to to commend city staff, the city manager and city assistant, city manager, Vanessa Johnson, and, and all the staff. You've been, you have been working hard since the day we approved this, this event. And, you know, on behalf of the council members, I really appreciate for the time and the effort that you put in during holidays at the end of the year and during the beginning of the years, you've been working hard and I saw that. I saw the, the, the effort that you got put in. So again, thank you very much and let's keep on going.
Yeah, I, I move to approve. I'll make a second motion to approve as recommended.
So we have the first and second motion on the floor. We'll call vote please.
We need to address.
We, we, yeah, since it's an urgency item, we actually need to present the report for the public.
Okay, sure, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and there are a couple of different components, not just the, the waivers, that we do need some discussion on it. So I will pass it to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. So we received requests from Santiago High School's Junior ROTC Program, which is their future military cadets that are interested in serving in our military and from the garment intermediate schools marching in color guard band to waive their TEP parade fees for the upcoming TEP parade. Each of those is two hundred and fifty dollars for the amount of five hundred dollars. And we're also requesting direction in regarding fees to future requests or that may have been processed already in these two, in these categories. So with that said, these are the category that the schools fall under is government, or nonprofit government. So the fee is two hundred and fifty dollars. As of earlier today, we, these two schools, in addition to these two schools, we have another application and payment from Nova Academy, which is a, a local tuition-free charter school in Santa Ana. They are a walking group. And then we have other districts, district entries, so not individual schools, but the district as a whole who have entered and have also paid fees. So those districts are Westminster School District, Garden Grove Unified School District, Ocean View School District. Um, and have also paid fees. So those districts are Westminster School District, Garden Grove Unified School District, Ocean View School District. And Anaheim Union High School District. Should the city council provide direction to waive fees to these schools and or district districts and. Sorry, that have already been processed, a refund can be issued. It should also be noticed, staff is still. Um, processing applications and expects to receive some, I'm, I have emails of some today, potentially that could be from schools as well. Upon direction, waiver of fees could also be handled and documented in these cases. The tep parade is really an opportunity to celebrate the community, encourage economic development and enhances local tourism. And when we know that participation from our local schools is a key component to a successful parade.
So there are two components, basically, that we're asking. So number one, we did get official requests after the agenda was already posted, which is why it's urgent. Um, and we're not meeting till after the tep parade. Uh, so that's, you know, that's an amount of five hundred dollars. But then it also begs the question on. Um, other schools because we are getting other requests unofficially, but you know, but I'm sure they'll be coming. About the possibility of us waiving those school fees as well. Um, this is only applicable to the elementary school, the secondary. These schools and the middle schools, so elementary, high school and and middle schools. Um, and it's at two hundred and fifty dollars each. If the council decides that you would like to, A. Um, refund the schools that have already, the schools or school districts that have already paid. And B, if you, because we anticipate that we may get more schools, if you want to set amount in which you're comfortable with, you know, with us. Waiving up to, so um.
I I'd like to thank staff for mentioning about that is bring up to um. Another points that I like to ask to see if the council um willing to modify the um um. Motion or else I will make a substitute motion. Um, with the direction of the council uh from the last previous meeting.
So there there was um Vice Mayor Nguyen and Councilman Monzo um made a motion and then it was interrupted. Um, to provide the staff report that the motion wasn't made clear.
Oh, so there was an, um, okay, so then I I get my input. My input is not only to the elementary, um, middle and secondary high school or district and district. Um, with the direction of the council from the last previous meeting that the council member Wes and myself. Uh, working with staff, I do have people uh from different organizations because we know that we work on the programs that. We need, you know, we need to to have a meaningful and good program to show a showcase on that day. For some of those organization, they are there to help us uh with the uh the showcase. At the beginning uh from uh um uh for the program, for the opening ceremony. So, you know, there's no point that we are going to have those organization when they are there to help us and make them to pay for it. So I would like to include for those who are there to help us on that day, uh, going to uh to include it in 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 this uh motion.
But are they a school district? I mean, this is, what did you ref, what was this category?
This is a community, community uh organizations such as uh um. Uh, the group from uh Global Thingy C E, uh, a group from uh different uh different uh activities from uh. I I guess there was only one or two uh right now. I don't see that many of those. And, uh, you know, I, when I talk to staff, uh, I said that we need to have those and and I believe that staff have no problem. Of inviting them and on behalf of the uh of the organizing committee, I've been inviting them and now they come back and said, well, you want me to. Help you and you want me to pay. He said, uh, how you want me to do to do it? So. Uh, I I I guess that at this point here, I'm asking for that. I I think it's only about two or three, the the max.
So I'm sorry, the the, so the performers that we've invited for the program aren't getting charged because we've invited them for the program. So I'm not sure. Yes, that they're they're also in.
If 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 we are not charging those performers, then forget what I just said. I just want to make sure that we include for those organization that they are there and, you know. My direction to them is, you know, go ahead and register with the staff. And they said, okay, if I register with the staff, that means I have to pay the fee.
If they are registering for the parade entry, if they're being invited to perform at the opening, at the stage for the opening. There's no, there's no fee for that.
Alright, thank you.
They walk through the parade.
So are we going to go ahead, uh, invite them, uh, send a, send our invitation or what?
So, so I just want to clarify, so those performers that are performing on stage. There's no fee for them to perform on stage because we invited them to the stage. But the request is also now, if they want to participate in the parade separate from the program. You'd like us to waive those fees as well, if they're invited for the program.
Let me give you an example.
Great.
Okay, let's say that we go out and search for um Dragon Dance. Okay, I know that, you know, how much we pay for it, it's cost a lot of money. Now, they perform at their time that we have the opening ceremony. And what happened is we want them to, after they perform, and we want them to go back and lead the uh the the. The parade. And and so if that's the case, they are walking. I want to clarify, they are walking. In this, in this situation, you said, okay, they are not, you know, in the parade, they are in the parade.
Okay, then that's then that's something that the council can definitely, can certainly waive because at. Those that are just entering as a parade entry, because we have no authority to waive the fee. Um, but that's, you know, if that's something you guys would like to waive, then that can certainly be added to this as well.
As of right now, I haven't got a chance to, you know, I have not yet the confirmation from them.
Yeah, and and that's okay. We can just do it at this point and moving forward if they are part of a participant of the program. They can. They can enter the parade with their fee waived.
If they're, if we're, if they're already been invited, I mean, I don't see the harm of them. I mean, you already invited them and they're performing, so what's the difference if they march or not? So if they choose to march, they march, so.
Okay.
I don't think that's.
So, do you want to revise your um?
I don't even know if you had to make it a thing, just if they're already been invited and they're already there performing, what's the difference if they march? So.
Okay.
I think all it takes for the staff is take note, right?
Make note of it, when we, when we do our reconciliation, that these groups are in the parade and in lieu of paying their entry fees. Performers during the program.
Usually if you have a personal party and you have a, you hire a band to perform, you're going to feed them. You next can say, go home. Yeah, so you're inviting them to perform, so let him, let him walk.
So, um, we have motion and second on the floor. Uh, I call for. We'll call vote please.
Thank you. That motion was made by uh Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Monzo, and that is. To waive the tep parade entry fees um for uh the various um. To include San Santiago High School's Army Junior ROTC and McGarvan Intermediate Schools Marching Band and Color Guard. For the tep parade and to include, I heard uh district information on here, but I don't see that on.
So, yeah, so we're, so we're waiving the fee, we're waiving the fee in the amount of five hundred dollars. For Santiago High School's Army Junior ROTC and for McGarvan Intermediate Schools Marching Band and Color Guard. And to waive the fees for future elementary, middle and secondary high schools. Um, that have already been processed and any future applications received from these categories for this parade, is that?
Thank you, Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Or Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Um, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just want to clarify, so. Um, there's nothing wrong with what we just approved, excellent. Um, I just want to say, we always have to, when we're making these kinds of decisions, take. Um, the public interest in mind. There is a public purpose behind what we're doing. So you're like, the public purpose here is you're inviting people to perform. And as part of that invitation, you're allowing them to participate also in the parade. That's a valid public purpose. It helps with the event. Just keep that in mind every time we're, especially with waivers. Uh, if we waive one group, it it does raise issues where should we waive everybody? We want to equally treat everybody. In this case, it makes sense and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to six point one, introduce for first reading of an ordinance. Uh, amending section two point zero four point one three zero regarding the public official. Uh, and employee interaction to amend the location for the mayor's office.
I move forward.
I second it. Um, I just got a couple of things, um, question for city manager probably and. Um, since this ordinance was first implemented, whenever that was. Um, has this city staff, uh, directors gone over this ordinance, which each staff member? To make sure that everybody under understands what's in the ordinance?
I can't say that they've gone like page for page comprehensively, but there was a general discussion within the department head team. And the directors were told to tell their staff members on what what it entailed in summary.
Okay, because the whole purpose of this um ordinance was. Again, I I want to make sure that my colleagues understand that when I say something is not to be divisive or to be. Offensive or to be, you know, to take a fight, it's just that Westminster.
We are going to vote if, because Vice Mayor Wen.
We have a quorum. Um, we have, the whole purpose of this was to clean up past, you know, past uh. You know, past councils from way back when, not just recently, but and I just want to make sure that this is. An item that's really important for that, us moving that our city forward to try to clean that up. So I want to make sure that. That uh every director, every department head. Make sure that their staff, each member of their staff reads this ordinance and understands the ordinance. So they make sure they, this is about knowing what their rights and and this is a new day. This this uh uh um ordinance is to hopefully clean up and uh the work environment. And I want to make sure that that every staff member understands their rights and what's in here. And and it's just a matter of, it's not, uh, staff is not to play politics. Staff is to be able to be free to do their job freely without any sort of uh. Interference or pressure or anything like that. So I want to make sure that that if every department head, when they have their staff meetings. Has takes time to to go over it, go over it line by line and make sure that everybody understands it. Okay, so if you can please make that something that you do, it'd be an important thing, you know.
Yes, please.
Council Menzo, uh, is it your concern that uh the fee that it takes uh from the general fund to. Kind of clean out the conference room for the mayor to have the office, is that your concern?
No, I didn't mention the office.
Okay.
Mentioned the other items, the other line items are in the ordinance. Um, if you, did you take the time to read it?
I did.
Okay, good. So that's not, I didn't mention the office at all. Um, you guys made the decision to move it back and that's your decision, but I didn't make any reference to the office at all.
Okay, um, we we have in-depth uh discussion uh from last meeting and this is a first reading of the ordinance. So uh I move to approve. Uh, oh, I I thought we have uh the motion in second.
Yes, Mayor, we actually have a motion made by Councilmember Fan West and it was seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Okay.
Um, and that is.
Uh, go ahead and repeat that so that the Vice Mayor Wen know what we're doing right now.
Yeah, so we're going to be um taking a vote and um you did made, you did make the second on that motion and that is. Um, to introduce her first reading, uh, ordinance entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California. Approving an ordinance amending section two point zero four point one three zero, public official and employee interactions. Of chapter two point zero four, city council of title two, administration and personnel of Westminster Municipal Code to amend the location. Of the mayor's office and this is to be read by title only and waiting for the reading. Uh, Councilmember Fan West?
Uh, can, I have a question. So regarding this um agenda item. I was thinking, you know how we mentioned earlier that we will take the lowest bidder for to do any project in the city? Uh, with fixing the door and the entrance way for the mayor's office in City Hall. Does it really cost like eleven thousand to just fix that door?
Well, so we got quotes from, so, so when you're talking about the lowest bidder, you're talking about a public works contract. Um, when we're getting quotes for this type of of work, I mean, we're getting essentially quotes, we're calling, you know, three different vendors and. So if we've, you know, we've picked them, so that's the cost they provided. We do have, we have a purchasing ordinance, so I I don't, I'm not sure what the question is.
Uh, yes, I I kind of surprised that it costs that much to to fix the door itself.
Our our assistant, our assistant can talk a little bit more about.
Yes, please.
Yeah, or engineer can talk a little bit more about the costs, what some of those other things entailed.
Can you talk up and also, um, can you specify what's included in that work?
Yeah, so good, good evening, um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. So you know, with this particular project, we had also included three additional rooms at City Hall. That want to be soundproof and then do additional partition. So. The estimate that we got back was more than fifteen thousand dollars. So as a result, we needed two bids. And we went out, obtained a second bid, which is actually more than what was originally proposed.
Why are we uh assessing on three rooms when it's just one room for the mayor?
It's just the timing of it uh to improve other locations as well. Sometimes if you do just one location, you're not going to get the best. So we felt at this is the same time, you know, just have the contractor move in and then do all the offices at the same time.
So which other room are we doing besides the mayor room, the front one?
We're fixing the large conference room.
Okay.
And room as well, just to reduce noise. And then lastly, uh, Dofu's office and Lucy's office.
Yeah, how come that, was that spelled out in the, in the last, when this came before council the last time? What was exactly, what was being, what did the eleven thousand include?
That was part of.
A scope of work?
That was one room to relocate the mayor's office.
Yes.
We figure at that time, you know, there's additional requests from other staff. So I went ahead and just lumped the other rooms together.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to save this a little bit here. So the eleven thousand dollars that, oh, it's why you're not, you're not, you're still.
Yeah, it's safe, yeah.
So you're. Every, so he's, he's actually falling in for our public works director. Um, so the, so the cost of the modifications of eleven thousand dollars, it included the drywall insulation locks. The furniture and the separate entrance for just the mayor's office. There are additional costs that were grouped in with the contract that includes soundproofing for. Our conference room and then a couple of the offices, including mine. So that's where the eleven thousand dollar comes in.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's not, it's not just eleven thousand dollars for a door.
Question, um, um, how are you, how do you, how are we going to do this work? Are you going to do this work in phases? But you can't kick. You can't, you can't kick every uh one, two, three, you know, four folks out of their office at the same time.
Excellent, excellent question. So we intend to do all the noise related work on the weekends.
Okay.
Days, we'll just keep it to uh just final touch up, painting, something that doesn't involve a lot of debris or noise.
And it's actually, and this actually starts, I believe, this weekend?
It is, it's starting this weekend.
Alright.
Because we're trying to finish everything by.
So I will be kicked out of my office for a period of time.
Okay.
Another issue too is we have to pay prevailing wage. You know, because we're a government, uh, it's not private, you know. Have to pay what the prevailing wages, so it does tend to drive up costs a little bit higher than what a standard person would pay.
Exactly. And then, you know, with the material escalation cost nowadays is through the roof.
Yeah, material cost is. Yeah, material cost is three, four times what it was a year and a half ago, two years ago.
So are you guys saying if I'm a private, uh, business owner, construction, I should always do business with government?
Public works is the best, the best, public works is the best contract to get.
If you're, if, if there is a private construction company or. If there's a construction company somewhere, they can certainly get on our vendor list through public works. So that is definitely something that, uh, that is available. So anytime that there's a bid, we send out, you know, to the shareholders list and.
All right, you here out there, small business owner, we encourage you to join us and, and throw your bid in.
Okay, um, so we have a motion in second on the floor. Go ahead and, uh, call both, uh, go call both, please.
Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
No.
Council member Ho?
Who are we voting on? This is, we're passing the resolution or the revise?
Right.
Oh, the first reading of the ordinance. Yes, we, um. This is just the first reading. I'm going to go ahead and. Approve it. Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries for one mayor.
Okay, uh, like, uh, beginning of the meeting, we asked to, uh, move items point three, uh, before our six point two. So let's move on six point three now. And it is, uh, ordinance related to the term for council meetings. Um, I believe that this is from, um, council member West. Please go ahead and present your case.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, so, uh, with this, um, ordinance rate time for council meeting. I think, uh, you know, this is all, you know, housekeeping. Um, I think it's important to respect our staff again. We all agree with that. Uh, and the, uh, resident, you know, those who call their home going on here and watch our, uh, council meeting. Going till one thirty AM in the morning and it's, uh, it's unacceptable. So I think by doing this, starting an hour early, because as we look at the study nearby cities. And Christine has done a great job, a city manager and Adolfo as well. To let us see what city is meeting at five o'clock, at six o'clock, at seven o'clock. And I think there's only two nearby city meets at seven o'clock, including us. And now most of them start at six or five. So I think it's reasonable within our study that we see other cities just doing as well because of the timeframe respecting our staff. And, um, those who do business in the city and those who watch our agenda. So I think it's important and I, I move this agenda forward, starting at six PM. And then also have a cap time at ten PM. And if the majority of votes in the, on the council here want to continue, we can continue. So, uh, I think it's, it's just housekeeping rules. So I think this is good.
Yeah, you have my second.
Yeah, um, before we go there, I'm going to say, yeah, I agree with council member West. Um, I tried, I believe, I could be mistaken. I tried already once to get it started at six and there was no appetite for it. So yeah, six o'clock is a decent time to start. But, um, I think that we need should, I mean, I, I understand maybe some of the folks here have some. You know, perception that there, every single meeting that we're bickering, you know, about useless stuff. Which there ha- obviously there has been, you know, very unproductive meetings. We all know that. But for the most part, a lot of times, we have very heavily, heavy agendas where. You just, that's just how long it takes and there's, that's, that's the people's work. That's. And there, and a lot of those agenda items are time sensitive as well, where it's that we need to prove those agenda items. As you, you get, you know, you, um, the two new members will see as time goes on. That a lot, that's for the most part, that's what happens is that our agendas are heavy at times. Especially when we get into, uh, there's some certain months where, um, uh, meetings are canceled. Then we have one meeting a month and then when we come back to the next meeting. You know, we have a laundry list of things to get through. So it's just, that's just the name of the game, uh, what happens. Uh, so I think we currently have the deadline of midnight. So I think you'll see that. That's a lot of times, that's how much time we need. Um, if anybody on the council has in the past, has been affected with, affected by our late meetings, it's me. There's times where I don't get to, uh, we leave here at two thirty in the morning, three AM. And just for the new, new council, I, I get up at four and I had to be to work at, you know, five fifteen, five ten. So there's meetings where I never even went to bed. Wake up Wednesday morning at four and then I go to bed Thursday night. And that's so, I mean, if anybody is affected, but that's, that's what I signed up for. That's the people's work that we need to do. So, um, and then even just for the council's knowledge as well, you know. Council members can leave, if you choose, if you have somewhere to go, you can just, we can just get up and walk, walk out. Um, it's, it's fine. If that's what you need to be somewhere, you need to be somewhere. And we can, you know, you don't have to stay for the whole, whole thing. So I think I like the six eight, six PM start. I just think ten, ten, uh, ten PM is too early. So, um, I would say just leave it at, at midnight.
I think, uh, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I know that the number of times that you complained that, uh, um, you need to be at work that's early in the morning. Uh, and, uh, I understand, you know, staying through the night, uh, it's not. It's not good for you, to be honest with you, you know, to get back to work early in the morning. I, I believe there was a time that we have to work until three o'clock in the morning. And you have to wake up at four and, and be at work at, you know, uh, after that. So, uh, I think it's reasonable, uh, when you say that the six PM, uh, starting time is not, uh, a problem for you. For the ending time, I like to have it that time because, uh, we will talk about the six point two. And, uh, I'd like to, um. I'd like to mention a little bit about that because I like to wait, but then, you know, it's affected, um, you know, the, the, the timing.
Can I finish this?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so basically with this, uh, the timeframe and we, we agree with you. I, I appreciate that you, you know, stayed to the end in the previous last two years, you know what I mean? Till sometime at two or one thirty in the morning. Uh, but I think this is just housekeeping, but not only that, uh, you know, as a mother of three boys, I'm not going to need to brag. You know, I manage, we homeschool our boys as well. So as you know, we juggle a lot of things, you know, small business owner and whatnot. So the thing is that all of us have lives, even including the staff as well here. So by allowing the six PM, which all of us agree, the ten PM is good because it helps us to get the city's business as, as much and as fast as we can. And if we need more time, as the council decide to vote on it, we will extend it like how we did on the first meeting of the year. Uh, the new council. So I think it's so important to move this agenda forward, approve it. So I, I, I motion to move it forward.
Okay, I have a question for staff or for council. I don't know. Has there been any, I, I, I know that, um, currently, uh, staff is off on Fridays, right? City halls close Fridays. Um, and I know some of you like Christine and Adolfo. And I'm sure our chief, they work Fridays, but has there been any thought about having, or I don't know if it's possible. I'm just thinking out loud here, having meetings on Thursday?
Uh, is that on the agenda today to talk about it?
What we're talking about, right?
So, no, with.
Okay, maybe you can just, maybe you can answer that question later.
Uh, I'm asking, uh, city attorney.
Ask that question.
So we're in the topic?
Yeah, you can, because the ordinance covers that entire section and, and that includes the day. It's in the ordinance. It's in, it's here for approval. Wednesday? Um, arguably, you know, it's for the time of council meetings, the time might include also the day. Is there any other cities that have their meetings on?
Most, most of the cities that we've observed in the area meet on a Monday or a Tuesday. Um, and the reason being for that is, you know, you, well, it's like our dilemma when we have our agendas, right? I mean, it's nice that we're able to produce an agenda well in advance of seventy-two hours before the actual meeting. But other cities that have their meetings timed out, um, they, you know, they, they kind of truncate that time a little bit more. So it's closer to seventy-two hours before the meeting. You end up with a meeting on a Monday or a Tuesday. But, um, that's, that's generally where you have the meeting early in the week and then in some cities. And then staff has time right after the meeting to do what they need to do to, you know, create reports or follow up from that meeting, et cetera. Um, and then anyway, that's generally when they.
Okay.
That's the comment, that's the comment. I, I haven't seen a Thursday.
Okay, that's fine. I was just like asking, so that's fine.
So we have a motion, uh, you say a second to the motion?
We have a second.
Oh, we have a second. Okay, can you, okay.
So the motion was made by council member Fan West and seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. Um, and that is to, um, uh, conduct first reading of an ordinance. That would set the time to begin meetings at six PM and end at ten PM, um, with a vote to continue to extend that. And the, the ordinance is, uh, entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California. Amending section two point zero four point zero one zero of title two administration and personnel of the Westminster municipal code. Relating to the time for the city council meetings. This is to be read by title only and waiting for the reading. Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
This is for six to ten?
With the option to.
Six ten.
By voting.
Six to ten. Okay. Well, I think ending it at ten is quite early. We're here to do the people's business and ending it at ten PM is quite early.
It is.
Um, but you're agreeing to that?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Have the option to vote to extend it.
Yeah, we, we also include.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and approve it and see how it goes.
The vote is yes. Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, mayor.
Okay, we are going back to six point two into front one. Uh, amendment to ordinance related to oral communications at city council meetings. Um, I believe this one from council member West, please go ahead and present your case.
Yes, uh, this is another housekeeping, um, agenda. So, you know, we do have the five minutes and I believe Christine give me in-depth information. And I see it, saw it as well in the report that other nearby city, you know, have, some have fives. A lot of them have threes from northern Orange County to southern Orange County. And, uh, you know, it's normal for three minutes and there's nothing, uh, it's going to change with that. Uh, so I think it's good to continue, uh, with the three minutes to help us everyone to stay focused on what their concerns are. And I think it's important to know because that's what we're here as the council is to hear the people's concern. And I think this is a great way of housekeeping as well for our council meeting.
Okay, um, any comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Um, first of all, I want to say that, you know, we heard the backlash from the community. When you strip folks, anywhere you strip folks, the time of they have the opportunity to speak. I mean, it's just, you know, understandable. Their community is going to get upset because you're, you're taking their, pretty much. You know, limiting what they can and cannot say. And that's, that's not going to, that's not a very popular thing to do. You know, I understand the goal here. The goal here is to get home earlier. Again, you know, you know, we can leave whenever we want, if you want, if you have somewhere to go. But we are trying to, you just mentioned doing the people's business and doing the people's work. Well, that's staying late, going listening, uh, sitting through, uh, public comments as painful as sometimes it may be. That's the job we signed up for, you know, um, you got to learn to, you know, um, take criticism. Grow, you know, a thick skin, you know, um, not every decision that we make up here is, is going to please everyone. And this, and I, and I've learned that in the, in the eight years I did in the planning commission. I think I'm doing the right thing and it's never going to make everybody happy. Um, but that's what we signed up to do. Um, silencing people is never a good thing to do. That's, to me, that's a suppression of democracy. But in the, in, in the spirit of, of, um, in the spirit of, uh, compromise with my colleagues. Um, I'm willing to do other things to. You know, cut down on the time of the meeting, but at the same time, make sure we have a, uh, uh, an opportunity for folks who want to stay later. And, and speak on, on other items. So, um, I would suggest that we offer those other opportunities for the community if they want to stay later. Um, and I would suggest if you want, uh, members can pick and choose what they, uh, want to speak of at the beginning in oral comments. If you want to do three minutes like other cities do, okay, let's do three minutes of oral communication. And this is my suggestion. Three minutes oral communication. If a consent calendar item is pulled, allow for that. Uh, for two minutes of speaking time for if a consent item is pulled. Um, a regular business agenda items. I would say just stick to the two minutes for those, each individual agenda item, two minutes. And three minutes for public hearing items. And that, and folks who want to stay later and speak on those items, they have an opportunity to. So that way, I think that will significantly cut meeting time, um, by a great deal by having that. And as you can see, um, not too many folks stayed late. So I think that would really, um, help in cutting the meeting time drastically by doing that. So, um, that's what I'm, I'm, I suggest in my motion to do, um, those three, two, three and three on those items.
I like that idea.
Menzo, uh, council member Menzo, um, basically with this, we have not changed any layout. Except for the time reducing to from five to three.
Yeah.
So everything is the same, you know, when they are speaking and whatnot, public. Um, the thing is that, you know, the other thing I can think of is we can do an hour and fifteen minute at the beginning, right? Of speaking, uh, three minutes, meaning an hour, uh, for those who are here to public speak. And then the fifteen minutes are for those who are online, uh, they can speak for that last fifteen minutes. And then, um, for the, those who come later, we've, because those we do have who work late and can come. Then we can continue maybe that oral speaking at the end for another hour or so. Uh, I think that might be an option for those because for us. What I'm doing right here is not silence anyone first amendment. Because this, most of the nearby city, Huntington Beach, other area, they, it's three minutes. You know what I mean? So the thing is that we have a lot of people and we want them to share their grievances, their concerns. And with three minutes, I realized today, they got to the point, they got to share their concerns and I love it. I love to hear that. And, um, you know, I think that's important.
I, I think that would be worse because you're, if you're, you had a room full of, 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 a community today and you can see how passionate they were. And how emotional some of them got. So if you're saying, imagine how upset they would be if we say, we're only going to give you an hour and a half. And the rest of you that didn't get a chance to speak, you're going to have to wait till midnight to come. You're going to have, they're literally going to be out here with pitch and forks.
Basically, council member Menzo, I was trying to work with you. Uh-huh.
That, that was.
I would like to, I, I know that you guys have a chance to talk about this multiple times already. And the three members here, the council member here is, including me, uh, the mayor have not got the chance to talk. Let us go ahead and, and, and share our, uh, opinions.
Go ahead.
Before you guys can, can continue, please, if, um, my council member or vice mayor, uh, Wen, if you want to share yours.
Um, you know, I, I understand that, um, council member. West would like to clean house. West would like to clean house or have to do some housekeeping, but I would recommend that it just you need a little more experience so you understand, and I'm, I'm, I'm saying this very respectfully. Um, it, so that you understand, number one, is that people who stay late, they're here, people like such as Ms. Terry Rains here, she wants to speak on a certain agenda. And when she does, there isn't enough time for her to speak, uh, let's say, at the very beginning about her grievances and then and on or relating to the agenda that she wants to speak about. So I think we don't want to silence those people who are passionate in, um, being, you know, they, they want to contribute their ideas, um, to the agenda i- in a particular agenda. So I really like what I'm saying is I don't want to just agree with, I want to tell you why I agree with Councilmember Manzo's idea. Um, it sounds, it's not like a, a clean cut or just one size fits all, but really, you give more time uh, to people who need to speak about the agenda or to a public hearing, um, item. So I think that would be a good compromise and I really find that to be very thoughtful to those who, um, you know, that's a good compromise because we're being thoughtful to those who want to contribute their ideas uh, on a particular subject, um, on a particular agenda and to also mitigate, or shall I say, uh, take into account what you're trying to do is to reduce meeting time. So I that's, that's, that's my two cents on that. And so I would like to, everybody to consider, um, Councilmember Manzo's suggestion.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen, do you have anything or?
That was a motion, but
But is that a substitute motion?
No, no.
That would have to be.
Mine, mine was a motion, so.
You want to second it or you?
No, I, I thought she had a motion, no, no? Did you make a motion?
I motioned to move forward and
it has to be a substitute.
We haven't got the second, you haven't got the second yet.
Right, we only have one.
So, so.
I'll make a second then.
Okay.
Did you make a motion?
No, no, mine would have to be a substitute because Councilmember West made a motion.
Right.
I did a motion to move this forward.
Uh, she, she has made the motion, but there was no second to that.
No, 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 cuz I didn't hear her win.
No, uh, you, you wasn't second and then he make this, the, 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 the motion.
Correct.
Okay, so right now to say that you are, you're, you make a motion, but it's not yet seconded. Okay, so you can, after, uh, now you can make a substitute motion if you want. And then there will be second to it.
No, he made a substitute motion.
He make the motion.
And I seconded.
No, there was no, there was no official first motion, original motion, because her, she made a motion, there was no second as the mayor stated.
Right.
And then, um, Councilmember Manzo made the second which she, I mean, ma- made, um, an, a motion which you have now seconded.
Yes.
So now that is the current motion, okay?
So, if you don't have
What is the most?
Okay.
Three, three, something I didn't hear.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a or, or oral communication, three minutes. If, if, if somebody, if a, somebody, a consent calendar item is pulled, two minutes, regular business, uh, agenda items, uh, two minutes, and public hearing, three minutes.
Okay, uh, so are you seconding his motion?
Yes, yes, I have.
Alright, so we have motion on the floor, but before we vote, I'd like to have my comments. Uh, first of all, um, as much as we, um, want to entertain, uh, public members' valuable input, we still have city business to do. Think about this today, we have only thirty four people plus five, five people from, uh, from, uh, from Zoom. And it took us to almost ten, uh, eleven o'clock already. Um, not to mention that we don't have that many people that were up today. Three minute to six minute. That's, you can see it. What, and we have seen that a lot more people sign up and do the overall, uh, uh, you know, communication before. So I, I do totally agree with, um, uh, Councilmember West that we should have, uh, we should limit the time of our communication from five to three minutes. In addition to that, um, as, uh, CEO already mentioned, since we have business to do, we need to, you know, we wait until the, the public comment is done and by that time, we are our tires, we, we can't make the intelligent decision to be, to be honest with you. At this time, I just want to, you know, to vote and then get it go over with. I have seen that many times already. We need to be alert, we need to be, you know, uh, understand what we are trying to, we have to have enough time to, you know, to reason, uh, for what we are, uh, voting for. So, um, I totally agree with the Councilmember West that for the first hour, we are going to take the input from the in-person public comments and the next fifteen minutes for the Zoom, uh, people. And then we can go on with our business, regular business. But I'm sorry, I'm talking, I didn't, who, who was it? Okay, please. And then when we finish with our, you know, at least we wait, uh, we, we either finish with the items that we agendaize on that day or we will choose, uh, important items to go first. By ten o'clock, we can go ahead and come back and take, um, the public comments from people. Now, let me see why we, we do that. You heard it from, uh, Council, I mean, from the public members today. They said, you know, the meeting is too early, I haven't got out of the work yet, so I, 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 I want to be comments. Yes, that was, that is the time for them to go ahead and make comment if they want to. So we are actually having, you know, um, balance both for the people who are who could not make a public comment at the beginning and we, uh, can hear the people from at the end of the meeting. Uh, whether the condition is at ten o'clock, we are going to stop and take the public comment if we need to. So, um, I do agree with you and I, I want to make a, uh, 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 you want to go ahead and make a decision, I mean, motion, if, if not, I will.
Yeah, look, can I interject one thing real quickly? I want to be sure we're, we're in compliance with the Brown Act.
Right.
The Brown Act requires, it mandates that we must allow public comment that if it pertains to anything on the agenda before or during the consideration of an item, we're not allowed to discuss it at all until we've allowed public comment.
Okay.
So we have to allow, and that's the reason why most cities, they put this, or all cities really put this at the beginning so that people can comment. You, so really what I would say is you either need to leave the kind of process that you have now, which is at the beginning, allow people to comment, whether it's three, four, five minutes, whatever you choose, or allow a kind of more along the lines what Councilman Manzo is suggesting, which is as each item comes up, you allow public comment, but it has to occur before we talk about it. So there, that's where the problem comes in, in allowing comment later. Um, we can't, we can't cut short the public's right to comment before you, you make, talk about it or make a decision.
Yeah, that, well.
I agree with, uh, the attorney.
Yeah, can I make, uh, can I expand or elaborate on my, the reason that I cho- I, I try to make that compromise with you, the, you know, reasonable compromise where we're accomplishing, the two things we're accomplishing, shortening the meeting time, which that's, you know, personally for me, it's better, right? But at the same time, we're still upholding democracy, we're, and the people who want to stay later can stay and speak at the item. And the other thing it, it too is that when an item comes up, I call it a regular business item or, you know, a public hearing item, we have rules to follow. But we can treat the regular business item as a public hearing item, where now we're speaking on the item. We take a staff report and now we're in the weeds and we all know what we're that public is hearing the staff report, council's hearing the staff report, we're all on the same page and we're hearing. And then that, that we can have a, an informed public together with the informed council and we can take input and we can receive input and we can co- council a comment uh, from the staff report. At that, that way, we're shortening the time for the meeting time and we're still upholding democracy by making sure that the public has an opportunity to speak on that item if they so choose to stay late. Chances are that most people are gonna do, like today, what happened today. Most people spoke public, uh, public hearing, excuse me, oral commu- communication, which will happen most of the time. What happened today after oral communication, more than half the room exits. Very rarely you have, uh, people like Ms. Terry Rains that stay till this late. So we're gonna still, as, as the city attorney mentioned, the last thing we want to do is, you know, not comply with the Brown Act. So I think my proposal would accomplish that what you're trying to do.
Well, what, what I'm thinking is with this three minutes to comply with the Brown Act, we are not changing much at all how the city is run. I want to keep it clean, I want to keep it three minutes. I mean, people did well today, some of them just went under three minutes. So what I'm saying is that three minutes doing the business, I think it's perfect and just keep it as that and as how we have been conducting business, but reduce it to thirty minutes.
Uh, Councilmember, I mean, Vice Mayor Ho, um, Vice Mayor.
May I have a question for, uh, Councilmember Menzo? So you propose a three, three and two, right?
No, three, two, two, three. Three, two.
What was the last three?
So three for the oral communication. If somebody pulls a consent calendar item, which doesn't, I mean, doesn't happen all the time, but every now and then somebody will pull a consent calendar item. And so they would get two minutes for that, two minutes for an agenda, regular business agenda item, and three minutes for public hearing items.
Let me, uh, let me go ahead and clar- clarify that, uh, Councilmember Menzo. Number one, for a consent calendar is only according to what is right now. Only council members are the one who are able to pull that, uh, from the, the item.
Yeah.
Not the member of the public.
Correct.
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 Okay, so, you know, um, and I believe that what, one of the meeting that is up to council member to allow the speaker, you know, we have to vote to, to allow that person who want to speak on that item. So, uh, I just want to clarify, it's not the public right to pull the, uh, consent calendar item. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I am going to make a substantive motion and I ask you to, uh, yeah, to, uh, to consider this. And, um, knowing that the, um, uh, the city attorney already pointed out the Brown Act, uh, potential Brown Act, I am going to make this, um, substantive motion and I want to ask the city attorney to, um, confirm whether it is okay or not. Um, the three minutes, we're gonna talk about it. I still want to have like a first hour to have the, the comment in person in fifteen minutes for those who are on Zoom. Now, I understand that we can't do the agenda item at the end because it's, um, Brown Act violation. I would like to ask at that time if there are more speakers for agenda item, then we can extend the time for them to talk about. Otherwise, we are going to stop right there. Because you know that, um, there are people who come in, you can see it from a previous meeting and this meeting or, or some of the meeting, they are not talking about agenda item, they come in and talk about any that, you know, I'm not talking any, you know, often, some of them and I, sometimes that most of them, they came in to talk about something that, you know, they're trying to, um, it's not agenda item. And you know, because of that, you know, I, I remember that you were the one who tell me that to, we have to stop that too. So basically, you know, we have business to do, we have city business to do. And we need to consider that. And we have to also make sure that those people who are not being able to attend earlier, they have the time to, you know, to talk about it. And if they are there for their, uh, agendaized item, by all means, they can talk, uh, on that item.
But, Council, excuse me, city attorneys, I mean, legally, we cannot prohibit, as long as there, it's on their speaking, under our jurisdiction, I mean, they can speak on non-agenda items or agenda items, that's their legal right to do so. As long as they're not attacked.
Typically, typically what we do.
Yeah, I'd like to have the city attorney confirm that.
So typically what is done is you have them speak on a, agenda items or non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. Some cities provide two separate comment periods like that. I have seen it done and legally it would be permissible to place the non-agenda items at comments at the end of a meeting, if, if that's what you wanted to do. Um, if, I think that's what you're proposing.
That's what I think.
Because legally, it's not an item on the agenda, so that doesn't have to be done before the discussion because it's not on the agenda. Um, I think there are some difficulties with that, like I, I think has already been pointed out, people have to stay later. Um, but technically that is legal. Yeah, that is legal, but that would be a major, uh, First Amendment right that we're having them wait. Can you, I, I can just picture some really upset folks, maybe even taking us, you know, to court over that we're making them stay. And then what if council chooses to extend the meeting past ten P M? Then where does that put us? And we're not finished with our agenda. And then, so then now, we've bought, uh, we still have important agenda items to get to. And then council decides to extend it past ten, so then where does that put those folks to wait? Are they gonna wait till eleven, twelve? I mean, those are all things we need to think.
I want to go back to my motion again and ask the city attorney to confirm that I am okay, uh, the motion that I made is okay and it's not in violation of the Brown Act.
So the motion, as I understand it, would be three minutes for agenda items at the beginning of the meeting and then have, uh, place at the end of the meeting agenda?
No, let me, let me repeat that. I think that, uh, okay, it's a conclusion there.
Sure, I'm clear.
Let me go back and, and, and I will, I propose to have the, uh, reduce from five minutes to three minutes. That no question about it. For the first hour, for those who are in-house and want to make a public comment, they are okay, uh, we are, we will entertain them. For the next fifteen minutes, we are taking the people who are on Zoom because we can't ignore people on Zoom. So it took away, I mean, an hour fifty minutes already. Now, if on that day, we have more people who wants to talk about the agendaized item, which we can't move to the back of the meeting, then we will entertain those comments. But those who are non, uh, non, you know, non-agendaized, uh, item, they can wait until the later time. Is that clear?
Well, except for if there's people that are still there that have agendaized comments concerning items on the agenda, I would say we, we can't, I wouldn't stop it at an hour and fifteen minutes if it
That's exactly what I just said. You know, after an hour of fifteen minutes, if people still want, uh, still continue to talk about agendaized item, then we have to entertain those, uh, comments.
So basically, he's saying that the council will vote after an hour and fifteen minutes
If we
new agenda item that people need to talk about, right?
We can take it a couple ways, uh, either the, the, um, also can vote on that, or I can ask, uh, city clerk, uh, to see where on the, you know, people still want to talk about that, uh, non, I mean, agendaized item, or we can tell that, but, by the people who want to talk about agendaized item. And at that time, after an hour of fifteen minutes, we are going to tell them that at this point here, we entertain those who want to talk about the agendaized item. And for those who are talking, uh, talking on non-agendaized item, you are welcome to stay and talk after city business.
Why are we?
I'm, I'm sorry, uh.
Why are we making it so difficult and so confusing?
It's not, it's not difficult at all.
That, I think Councilmember West is a goal, which is a, you know, reasonable to shorten, that's to shorten the length of the meeting, right? So why are we So why are we putting, why are we, and the process to of doing that, we're we're pretty much. Making it difficult for the community to give us input. I think from Ram proposing, I mean, forty percent taking it from five to three. I mean, in that, and then includes the translation that goes from from ten minutes to six minutes, you, I mean, that's a drastic cut in time. And at the same time, we're not gonna have folks out there with pitching forks, you know, trying to lynch us. Because we're taking away their 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 freedom of speech. This time, if you if you just allow three simple, as other cities do, three minutes oral communication. And they can choose to use that three minutes however they want. If they speak on an agenda item after three minutes. Then they cannot speak on that agenda item again if it if it comes up. So that will limit them.
So.
So.
Okay.
We're desperate, we're gonna accomplish what you're intent.
With what you're doing is is not limiting the minutes at the the time.
Yes, it is.
What you're doing is adding more time. So when you want to reduce the time so we can do city business, I think it's best to keep it at three minutes.
Yeah, all those.
The the people were fine. Earlier, my proposal, original proposal is just everything the same as how we do city business, but reducing it to three minute like how we did today. Everyone got to speak.
Well, you guys do what you want, but I'm not gonna vote to suppress democracy and to limit people's.
Okay, that's fine.
People's uh rights to speak.
That's not.
That's the American way. This is why we, and this is, and and like I said earlier. We chose to run for council and we chose this job. And and that's what we, we, that's the job.
Okay.
We need to stay here. We have, yes, you are.
Us doing business.
You're suppressing democracy, you're suppressing people's right to speak on what they're passionate about.
With a motion.
So I I'm I'm still, so I mean, you keep, I mean, you hear. Freedom of speech first.
You are thinking yourself.
We're not, we're not at, some folks talked about uh. That's what's what, I mean, what do you say? Come on.
No, it's not. It's called doing city business and I think it's.
People still, people still have some time to to talk.
Uh I know that we have a motion and second on the floor, I might, if. I confirm that the founder, city attorney, is not in violation of the Brown Act with my motion. And my motion, yeah, you are free to to vote however you want to, you know, but we are, we do have the right. To propose what we think is right. My uh propose uh to the to have the reduced time of the five minutes to three minutes. That's one. The second one is to have the first hour for in-house people to comment about it. Fifteen for the um for the Zoom for both items. Non-item, non-agenda item or agenda item. That, you know, because I want to make sure that we have the time to redo our business. And then, you know, if there are, because of the Brown Act and we have to comply with the Brown Act. If there are more people talking about agenda item, we now narrow it down to agenda is item only. So that we can get the business growing. We are not ignoring people, uh you know, if who wants to do a non-agenda is item. And we are open up for them to do it at the end. This will accommodate the business that we are doing and at the same time. Uh we can accommodate to those people who cannot make it during the the first hour. So uh that's my motion.
Well, we had.
I I second it.
Well, we're all confused here because there was a motion and then there was a substitute motion. Now you're making a substitute to a substitute. So where are we at with?
I I think it's very clear. Let me repeat it again and uh city clerk and I mean, yeah, can uh confirm that. First of all, council member West.
Needs a second.
I.
What happened? Uh let let me, let let me repeat that.
If I may, the problem is we have an ordinance here, so. This is a first reading of an ordinance. I need to make sure I have the right language because if you're going to approve an ordinance. I gotta, I have to have the exact language. So um I'm trying to throw together some language here to accomplish what you're, what you're saying. Um if you could give me one moment.
Well, so while so while you're writing the language, I have to interject as being a former clerk. It is going to be a mathematical nightmare on the hour thing, so I feel like. At at if splitting it from an hour and then fifteen minutes for Zoom, if it's just easier to come. It you you combine it or I don't know what, because you're gonna have combinations of, you know, what if you had the first hour of. You know, all, you you had people who were, you know, speaking on, I don't know what, and they go under, over. They're gonna have to sit there and calculate, like staff's gonna have to sit there and calculate every single one. So I don't know if, you know, if, I mean, if you wanna, if you go by speaker, I mean, if you if this is something you're gonna push. If you're gonna do this version instead, if it's by speakers then as opposed to the minutes. That would help staff, the first blank speaker.
I have, I have no problem with that. I uh I think we can go with that.
Uh I think it's important to keep the people's right. To be honest, if we reduce it to three, we should first come, first served. Whoever put their name in and talk either agenda issue or not, but it's to three minutes. I think that appease the people, the public more. Because they wanna know that they can say they their piece, you know what I mean? So when we reduce it from five to three and we let them. Whoever first come, first serve, put their card in, the green card in, then they can speak. Either agenda item or non-agenda item. I think that's good. Because in that way, they feel like they still have their freedom to speak their mind.
Okay, um so let me, let me go ahead and wrap it up here. I think uh the motion from um uh council member Menzo is that. We are going to keep the three minutes to five. I I I know, but right now we are um we're having a motion on the floor. You know, we have to vote for it. And then we are going to close it up pretty soon here. The motion from uh council member Menzo is that keep reduced five minutes to three minutes. One. Number two, for agenda items, we are going to let them have two minutes. Correct? What else?
And the public hearing, three.
And the public hearing, the public hearing, but the three, I know that public hearing is is a muscle ready.
Yeah, but you're reducing it from five to three.
Okay, all right. So public hearing is three minutes instead of five. Okay, you're correct about that. Now, um that's one motion and seconded by uh council member Ho. Now, I have made a substitute motion. And I will revise my substitute motion according to the recommendation from the city's uh manager. That we reduce the five minutes to three minutes. We are going to take the first an hour fifteen minutes, whether is they are the the uh the people here to uh comment. On agenda or non-agenda item plus the people who are on Zoom. After then hour and fifteen minutes, we are going to start our business. And then when we we have to end at ten o'clock so that we can take additional non-agenda. This is non-agenda, but if uh after an hour fifteen minutes. We still have the agenda is item to avoid the Brown Act, we need to take that on.
I thought you were gonna per convert the hour and fifteen minutes to the number of people.
No, we are not talking about number of people. We are talking about.
Easier, you you mentioned that you're gonna take the advice of Christine, uh the city manager, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, no, my my number of people was, instead of taking a a a number and the number of minutes, like the hour and fifteen minutes. Just to designate like the first blank people, like the first ten people or fifteen people or whatever you decide.
So you'll you'll have twenty, you'll be able to hear twenty in twenty people times three minutes each. That will be sixty people, I mean, sixty minutes. So plus um another five people for fifteen minutes, so that'll be twenty-five people. So twenty people in here in the auditorium and five people on Zoom.
Okay, we can do that. We can do twenty-five people.
Or twenty-five people total.
Can we have the city attorney verify?
Again.
Since we have the substitute motion from Menzo. We cannot do a second mo- substitute motion, right? Can we do two substitute motion?
No, no, we should vote on the substitute motion first.
And then go back to the original, right?
Or the substitute can withdraw their motion. We can vote on the original motion first.
On the original motion? We we, two minutes for regular business items, but we also have uh. Commissions and committee items and legislative items, so that.
That's not the original.
I I I do make the substitute motion. You, do you want me to repeat that?
Um I think the important thing I need to understand on the substitute motion before you make it. Is are we gonna go with an hour? Are we gonna go with a number of people?
That's what I'm trying to say, that we are now going with the number of people.
Okay, and so what what you're gonna propose was fifteen people?
No, twenty-five people.
So for the the first, the first twenty-five people who are in person. After that, then.
We still have people who sent uh the agenda is item. Because of the Brown Act, we have to take on those people.
Okay, but there was a portion about Zoom people on Zoom. Did you still want that?
Included in there is twenty-five people.
That helps, okay.
So I have a question, so if we're gonna, you're saying to after ten o'clock. Is the council now can, from their previous agenda item? The council can, needs to vote if we're gonna extend the meeting past ten, ten P M, right? So if we're limited the community to, what'd you say, an hour and a half total or what is it at the beginning?
An hour fifteen minutes.
Okay, so if if they didn't, if all those folks didn't get enough time to speak and there's still more, still more folks. That wanna speak on an agenda item at this, and then we're at the end of the meeting. And what if we don't, we don't uh. Extend the meeting.
Okay.
But there's, they still, then they're gonna have an opportunity to speak.
No, it it is already included in my substitution, the substitution, that that emotion that. We are going to attend a lot, we are going to take uh take on the non-agenda side, we are going to hear them.
But what are we gonna do with the folks? That they didn't have enough time to speak on an agenda item at the beginning? Are we gonna tell them, sorry, go home, you can't speak?
Well, uh I mean, you, we already provide enough time for them to, you know.
Attorney, how would that happen? If if there we had more folks. That wanted to speak on an agenda item at the beginning and there wasn't enough sufficient time or we said twenty-five people. And those folks wanna speak and and they wait till the end.
No, sir, uh I I want to re.
Gonna tell them no because we're only gonna.
I want to.
We're only gonna take non-agenda items at the end?
Delegate uh council member uh Menzo.
City attorney question, mayor. Um so if those folks stay and and.
As long as they're given an opportunity to speak on agenda items at the beginning before or during its consideration, that's legal.
Talking about.
If at the conclusion of the meeting.
My point.
No, they're gonna take a second opportunity to to say something, then I they could do that, as long as they're given the opportunity originally.
If they're not given the opportunity at the end.
I think in the motion, he is giving them the opportunity. Because if they wanna make a comment on an item on the agenda, they would be allowed.
But the scenario is we have to vote at ten P M to extend it.
And by the way, right now, we're past midnight, so we do need to take a vote on that.
Okay, so my my motion, my motion again. Make it clear before we vote, this is a substitute motion. And uh we have the second. My motion is to reduce from five minutes to three minutes.
Uh Mister Mayor, I I thought.
Let let me finish, um uh council member West. That's A. B is, we will take the first twenty-five people to talk. About the non-agenda is and agenda is item. If an hour fifteen minutes for those people who want to talk, continue to talk about the agenda is item. We need to entertain them because of the Brown Act violation if we don't. Now, at the ten o'clock, we are going to stop council meeting to take additional. Now, this time is non-agenda is item. Why? Because that's give us the time to do the city business. Now, let's say that we have ten items on that day. We can choose and choose which item need to be doing first. So we can also delay those items that not need to resolve at the time. So that's, that's my main point, that you know, we we still entertain people who want to do the public, you know, uh comments. So we are not trying to push them away. We will entertain. You know, after ten o'clock, if we, you know, go to twelve o'clock and we, you know, we can stay more to listen to them, that's fine. We can vote on that.
Mister Mayor, can I ask the city attorney? So my original was three minutes, so Menzo, mayor, uh council member Menzo. A uh second motion it, right? Whatever you call it, is that correct? So no.
No, you.
I, I original and he.
Vice Mayor, wait a second.
No.
Your your mo- there's no second.
Let me ask, let me ask the. Let me ask city clerk.
Wait, wait, let me finish, I haven't. So basically, my original proposal. He did a second, you did a substitute motion. So my question is, can another substitute motion over Car- Carlos? Can can there be another?
Council member West.
Thank um Charlie, Mayor Charlie wanted.
Uh I just want to uh let you know that your motion, uh you make the motion at the beginning. But there was not a second.
Well, no one was paying attention because he, we and we were talking. And then you, Charlie said, you, we still have three other members to talk, but we were just talking, negotiating.
Vice Mayor did second your motion, your original motion, and then I said.
No, I did not.
No.
Because I I I about to ask a question and you guys go on with, you know, ag- argument.
So where, so.
Okay, well, let me, yeah, this whole item is totally screwed up.
So we, so there's actually a few other things that we have to discuss too within these to clarify your substitutes and your originals, but. Um can we vote on extended meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So uh I call for um question right now, so um.
Extending the meeting.
You need a.
Extend the meeting past midnight.
To extend the meeting.
Okay.
You need a motion and a second to extend.
I make a motion. Extend the meeting to past midnight.
Yeah.
Okay, did you make a motion?
You made a motion.
Okay.
I did. Made a motion.
Who was, who seconded that or?
I did, I seconded.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion and second to extend uh the time of the meeting.
Thank you, mayor. Um that's correct. The motion was made by council member Ho, seconded by council member Fan West to extend the meeting past midnight. Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Manzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes, sorry about that.
Motion carries five zero, man.
Okay, a question, what are other cities, because we're, obviously, we're the wacky city now.
No, it's the deadest, the studies.
Do, no, I'm sparking about this this topic. What do other cities do with their um this process, you know?
So there's, there's, yeah, so there's a combination of what other cities do. So you have some cities, so most of the cities have. Um you know, have generally three minutes, right? You have a combination of three minutes and five minutes. There's only one city that had two minutes for a particular portion. So you have, you, so you have cities that have um public comments where they combine both agenda and non-agenda. You have cities that have um agenda items separate from non-agenda items. Uh you have, you know, you have two cities that I am aware of in which um they have. Uh they have like a portion at the beginning that they designate in which they do have, you know, exit like the first, you know, um first hour. So I think Cypress is one that has it that way, where they have them combined um for non-agenda and agenda and that's what they've designated. I haven't actually physically seen, you know, their meeting to see of how they, you know, how they continue on, but I couldn't imagine that they would be. Violating the Brown Act and not allowing people to speak before um agenda items. So there's a good combination of what some of the other cities do. Irvine, Irvine being Irvine, um. They are definitely uh their own city. They have their uh their public comments are based on the number of speakers. The number of speakers that they have. So like Irvine, for example, if they have one to arbitrarily thirty speakers, then they get. Five minutes. If they have, you know, thirty to fifty, then it's like, you know, blank minutes and that that. That's just something that they have. But again, they're Irvine, that that's a, that's a very different. Irvine, that, that's a, that's a very different process. Um, but most, most of the cities, most of the cities designate non-agenda items and then they have agenda items. Agenda items being that, you know, they speak in front of each section. Some cities that have much smaller agendas, they will, you know, allow people to speak on each item per se, but obviously not at a reduced time, so not five minutes, generally three minutes. Um, so there are many ways to do this. It is this council's meeting, so it is your, you know, it is what, what, what you end up.
From, from what I get is some of the cities where they have the, uh, time to speak at the end of the meeting, their meetings start earlier. So there's, so that we don't, we're not running into, you know, ten, eleven P M. Where folks are staying that late.
Without, yeah, without looking at the meeting times versus the oral community that's merging two of these items together, um, most of the, most of the cities that I've seen with their meeting times, six, six-thirty, some five-thirty-five. So we're all in the same range. Um, the city that moves toward the end, I know, I believe Cypress was one of them. Um, if, I guess I can look it up, but, um, hmm.
They're, they're at the end.
Yeah, and, and the, the ones that get moved at the end are generally non-agenda items. When I worked in Costa Mesa, there was a period of time there where they also moved, um, you know, the ida, or speakers at the end of the meeting as well. So they had, you know, the first blank speakers that spoke, and this is a while ago, but, um, and, you know, the rest would have to wait toward the end of the meeting. Um, I, I can't say that they do that now. I don't, I don't remember if they do, but, um, there's a good, there's a, there's just different combinations of how you can do this. And it's really just refining what is, what you feel is best for, you know, for your circumstances.
I just feel on the sake of what I was proposing, I thought that was a good compromise, basically gonna accomplish what council member West was trying to do, was reduce the time of the meeting, but if that's not, uh, a desire to try to do both where you're still allowing an opportunity for comment on, on different agenda items, then just keep it simple and then go back to, to what council member West was saying, three minutes, oral communication each, and they're, and that's it. Forget it. I mean, but we're gonna sit here and do an hour, twenty-five people at the agenda, then non-agenda is.
I'm.
Then, then. Once again, I'd like to, uh, state that, you know, I am concerning for the city business. And with that, we are allowed to prioritize our, uh, agenda item. Whether we are going to take this, prioritize, uh, the item that we are going to discuss, or we can also delay it until the next meeting, which is not going to postpone our, this city business. And at the same time, we are not, uh, trying to push people away. We still end the meeting at ten o'clock for additional, um, non-agenda item, uh, from the public. So, um, we have the substitute motion and which is, uh, go ahead and, and then repeat that, Madam Collet.
Mayor, if I made it for that to the city attorney, since he's gonna have new, um, language for that ordinance that he was working on?
Right. Okay. Okay, concerning the, this is the substitute motion. There was a reduction, as is presented in the staff report, to three minutes. Um, so I would leave all that language the same, but I would add in addition to that afterwards, during council meetings, the first twenty-five speakers shall be allowed to make public comment concerning items either on the agenda or not on the agenda. After the first twenty-five speakers have spoken, if there are still people who wish to speak, the council will continue to hear only those people who wish to speak concerning items on the agenda. People who desire to make comments concerning items not on the agenda shall be heard at the end of the meeting.
So if I, if I could actually add to that as well, there's one issue on the Zoom, um, so two things. So on Zoom, we don't know what they're gonna talk about, and we have no requirement for, you know, pre-registration, so there's no way for us to tell. And there's no requirement that we, you know, have to have them pre-register to speak. There are some folks that ask in advance to speak, but not, not always, so we don't know what people are gonna talk about on Zoom.
Well, for the twenty-five people, uh, we take at first, uh, we still, uh, we still take them because it's not an agenda item or agenda item, right?
Yes.
And after that, we will ask whether it's, they are, uh, presenting the agenda item or non-agenda item. And we are going to take them on. If they are talking about non-agenda item, we can take them at the ten o'clock.
So, so, but, okay, um, as a compromise, since we don't have as many people on Zoom, can we just allow all the Zoom speakers to speak? Because then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna be unmuting people, asking them what they're, asking them what they'd like to talk about, and then if they say that, oh, it's on a non-agenda item, then we have to punt them back and forth. Just a thought.
So after twenty-five people, we are going to, not taking any Zoom callers, right?
No, 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 uh, no, we, we will, we will just take all the Zoom callers. Um, cause I think Zoom-wise, we only, I mean, at most maybe get any, maybe eight, eight speakers at a time on Zoom.
Okay.
So that way, we don't have to go back and forth and ask and unmute.
Sure, we can do that.
Assuming you're making that change, um, during the council meetings, uh, the, make sure you get this, the first twenty-five speakers shall be allowed to make public comments concerning items either on the agenda or not on the agenda. After the first twenty-five speakers have spoken, if there are still people who wish to speak, the council will continue to hear only those people who wish to speak concerning an item on the agenda and those people who are making comments remotely. That's the addition I just, based on the comment that was just made. People who desire to make comments concerning items not on the agenda shall be heard at the end of the meeting.
That's right.
Okay, I second it.
That's substitute motion. Uh, can we vote on that?
May I just ask a quick question? Um, for the first twenty-five people to speak, um, where does the Zoom people come in? Where do we cut those? There's something wrong there. Yeah.
What, what would happen logistically? Is we would hear, hear the first twenty-five. If there's only ten speakers in person, we automatically go to the Zoom people, right? And that, and we may conclude at fifteen. But if there's twenty-five people here in person, uh, and we get to the twenty-five speaker portion, we would allow people that want, have it, wanna speak on items on the agenda. And when that's concluded, we would then go to the Zoom speakers, regardless of whether it's an agenda item or not.
Yeah, that's.
And then anybody who wants to speak on, who still is left, wants to speak on non-agenda items would be at the end of the meeting.
I have a question for city attorney. So what if we have more folks in the, and that, that go past the twenty-five that wanna speak on agenda items? And they don't have an opportunity to speak on agenda items? Cause you're saying that the motion is to, at the end of the meeting, take the non-agenda items, right?
That's correct.
So what if we have more than twenty-five people in, in present here? That's more than twenty-five, and what do we do with them? Do we say, sorry, you don't get a turn today?
No, the motion included the, for you to, you have to hear them.
Yes, if they wanna speak on an agenda item, we would hear them at the beginning.
Right.
Yes.
So why don't, why do we have a number then? Uh, twenty-five?
Well, I still think my original agenda was just clean-cut, and it's just easy to do city business without discriminating, making complicating anything. It's just basically the same what we've been doing, but just reduce it to three, like today. It's a good example of it.
So we should vote, vote on the substitute motion, I think.
Okay, so we're voting on that. That motion, the substitute motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen, um, with all the revised motions that, um, were discussed, and that is to include, um, to conduct, um, make sure I have the right one here. To conduct first me, first reading of an ordinance, um, entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, amending section two point zero four point zero four zero, meetings, discussions, and referral to departments of the Westminster Municipal Code relative to all communications at council meetings, and this is to be read by title only, and waiving further reading with all the amendments as read into the record by the city attorney. Uh, council member Fan West?
No.
Council member Manzo?
No.
Council member Ho?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, um, excuse me, Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion fails, um, three, two.
Now we have to vote on the original motion? I mean, excuse me. Where, where we are, where we are on the motions.
Yes, you had an original motion that involves.
She had an original motion that involved three minutes for oral communications. If an item's pulled on consent calendar, it's two minutes, two minutes for regular business items, and then reducing public hearing items from five minutes to three minutes, but I also had added a comment that we also have legislative items and commission committee items that also need a time for them to speak.
Maybe two minutes on those then.
Does the second agree to that? Council member Ho?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I, I seconded.
Can we roll call that? Same ordinance, but with those changes.
Um, do I, do you want me to read it?
No, no.
Okay.
Same ordinance.
Okay, and that motion, um, with the revisions were, was made by council member Manzo, seconded by council member Ho. And, uh, council member Fan West?
No.
Council member Manzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
And Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Motion fails, three, two.
And I motion my original.
And your original motion was?
It's just three minutes, reduce to three minutes, keep everything the same, like how we did today. It's just reducing it to three minutes.
Is there a second?
Um, may I, uh, make a substitute motion on that?
Um, we first, let's first figure out if we have a second to this motion. Is there a second?
It's the same like today, basically.
Um, may I propose, um, just a little change to your motion? Is that? Um, I want to add, uh, um, two options. I actually like, uh, it depends if you, you want it or not. Um, like, um, the twenty-five people that, uh, talking about, uh, uh, whatever, um, the, the items on the agenda, uh, agendas or, um, uh, then, or, or whatever that they want, you know, except like, uh, um, personal attack, okay? And, uh, or may, we limit them to like, uh, an hour, forty-five minutes to, to the one that show up here and fifteen minutes for the, uh, for the one on Zoom.
So from what I'm understanding, as you say, to modify it a little bit by saying, uh, that non-agenda and agenda item for an hour, uh, forty-five minutes, and then the other fifteen for the Zoom. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Like, I'm okay with that, you know, to that three minutes.
Same one, almost the same one.
No, but there's no how many people. It's just basically anyone who wanna speak on non-item agenda or agenda is three minutes, right? And then the other fifteen minute is for the Zoom.
What was that, that comment about personal attacks? What, what was, what was that?
Basically, he's referring to non-agenda item and agenda item. Non-agenda, it could be any attack or any criticism or whatever. That's what I, I think he's trying to say. Is that correct? Vice Mayor Nguyen?
So what happens after the hour fifteen?
You, you have my second. If you agree on, uh, the modification that I propose.
Legally.
Make second.
I, I need to understand.
Yeah, because legally.
Are we going back to the idea of going one hour on any item, uh, on or off? And then fifteen minutes for Zoom comments concerning any item on or off the agenda? And what happens after the hour and fifteen minutes?
We continue the city business. I guess that's what they're trying to do, is to get the city business.
Yeah, but we still need to allow every people.
Brown, brown.
So to be honest, it's so complicated. Can we just keep it at three minute like how we did today? Where, you know, non-item, whoever comes here can speak until we're done and then the Zoom. I think that's the least complicated and least uh, uh, confusion for the staff to kinda arrange things and time. This is three minutes like how we did today. And just keep it as that. Because usually those who come and speak are between what, eighteen, fifteen to twenty max?
Let me, let me throw a compromise at you.
Okay.
Let me throw a compromise at you.
I'm okay with it.
You second it?
I second it.
He, he seconded my motion, the original.
Let me just throw a compromise at you, um. Because the goal, I understand your goal, and that's a good, I mean, that's something, it's reasonable. Why don't we, with the spirit of democracy and trying to make sure that people, and keep it simple and clean like you're, you're saying, just do four minutes and that's it. Four minutes and no hour, no twenty-five people, four minutes and that's it. Move on.
I, I think three has worked today, to be honest with you. And it's wet, smooth and good. I like it. And so I motioned to move it forward. And, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen seconded.
I think we have a motion that's taken on the floor. I call for a question right now. Okay.
My second question.
Okay, if, uh, if there's no additional, uh, comments, then go ahead and, uh, roll call vote, please.
We're gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, let me ask this to, just to clarify. If this items approved today, uh, and if we need to, let's say that, you know, we can see that, uh, it's, uh, happened again, and we need to bring it back to discuss about it, do we have to wait six months to do it?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, this could be brought back.
Okay, alright, so, uh, roll call, vote, please.
How come, how come that one can be brought back? Isn't the rule if it fails? Six months.
You're talking about.
You're deferring it or?
No, we're talking about approving or reduction to three minutes tonight, so nothing's failing.
Yeah.
You're saying, can we bring it back to change that? Yeah.
If it fail, it can bring back six months.
Even if it pass, we still, uh, bring back for the change if we, if we do.
You could come back and change it if it, it's not working out.
Okay, uh, so, uh, go ahead and roll call, please.
Yeah, I mean, even after the first reading, you could still change it between now and the second reading.
Thank you.
Let's go.
So the motion was made by council member Fan West, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. And that is for the title of the ordinance originally, uh, read for first reading with, um, the change from five minutes to three minutes. Uh, council member Fan West?
Was there more to that motion?
That's it. Keep everything the same.
It's, it's as presented in the agenda packet.
Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Manzo?
No.
Council member Ho?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries, three, two.
So, uh, we can move on to six point three, right? Uh, six point four, or six, four. Okay, six point four, introduce and conduct first, uh, reading of ordinance and adopt, uh, resolution amending various city commissions, boards, and committees. Um, staff. Uh, or do we need, uh, to discuss about this? Do we have, uh, anybody who wants to talk about this one?
I just wanted to, my concern was, um, you know, with the planning commission, now that's, that commission, as you all well know, a lot of the decisions are final decisions. Um, to me, that is one of the most impactful commissions that we have. That is the most impactful commission we have, I should say. So to me, it's, I think it's really important to have, obviously, you, we can't, I wanna have some verbiage in there where it says, prefer, if you had, you know, real estate experience or, you know, engineer, engineering, an engineer, real estate, um, you know, blueprint rating or construct, some, something in there that has some parameters that, that folks can say, th- these items here, if you have this experience, would be helpful. You know what I mean? You know what I mean? That, that would be something that would really, that, I mean, from what I understand, city attorney, we can't really make that like, um, uh, uh, a mandate for qualification, right? That we can't, they must, they must have this experience.
No, you could, it's just that most cities don't mandate it, they, they do take it into account.
Yeah, so I just want to have some verbiage in there that says like, this, if you had this type of background, it would be helpful for this commission and that's it. And also make sure that they have, they attend, uh, the, uh, training, public, uh, planning commission training, which I think there's one coming up here shortly. Just some, some sort of language in there that just, this type of background would be helpful for this commission. So that, that kind of will get people to say, oh, you know, that'll kind of get us to, you know, we're not gonna, obviously, I don't want to hold them to it because then that will kind of lessen the pool of, of folks that, that we can have on this commission, but I just think of having some sort of language in there that will make it helpful to have the background and this. I think that we should have some sort of language on that. Because, I, I mean, that is really the commission, like I said, makes very, uh, final decisions. Uh, decisions on land use, decisions on design. Uh, uh, and, you know, rarely that's something come, it's some of them comes to, uh, council approval, but mainly, they, they make a lot of final decisions to, to have. Um, I think it's really helpful if you, um, see some of the planning commissions in the past. It's, there's a lot of, um, very little to no input from some commissioners. Um, because sometimes I think just, um, uh, understanding what's being spoken about is that it's an issue. So I think we need to do our best as, as, uh, responsible enough to say, if you have this background, it would be helpful. I mean, and I think we should, that's a responsible thing to do. Uh, I'm not making it, I don't want to make it mandatory, but it's just good to have. So I think we should have that kind of language in there.
Council member, um, Manzo, I think it is important to have qualified people, but the thing is that this commission is for the public of those who live in Westminster, resident Westminster, who wants to be a part of public service, uh, on these commission that we as the council appoint.
You have to live in the city.
Yeah, the city of Westminster, that's what I say, resident who lives in the city of Westminster, they want to give back by being part of our commission. Uh, and I think it's important for us to kind of allow them to be part of it because I believe staff are guy, are guiding them in those decision in planning, is that correct?
No, we just, they just inform, they don't guide.
Like the information, they're gonna get all the information they need to make the decision, is that correct?
Yeah, my, what I'm proposing is still accomplishes what you're saying. I just think we need to have same language in there, this is if you have this background, it would be helpful. I'm not, it's not gonna say you have to have this background, that's all I'm saying. That if you have, if you have this sort of background, it'll be helpful. To help you.
And I guess the compromise on that, so if we can't, we can't, if we can't require it. But what we could, but what we, I mean, what we could do is just be a little more detailed about what a, what a planning commission does and that's just something that's part of good customer service, we can just, when we, you know, put the application out, we can actually just have a better narrative, what, you know, some of the things you'll be dealing with and just summarizing what, you know, we, we have, we have the bylaws, we have, you know, other information that we can provide, um, as to, you know, what it is that they do, but we can kind of craft it in a, in a much more, um, you know, in, in an easier way for people to understand what they're walking into when they're applying for the commission, we can do that much.
So instead of saying mandate, right, we just say, these are the, what you do in this position.
Yeah, like if you're, if you're gonna apply for a planning commission, it's helpful to have, you know, this type of experience, you're gonna be dealing with land use and whatever, yeah, whatever it is, and we don't have to include that within the ordinance, we can just include that as part of like the commission committee application packet, just make it, just make it better.
To my, to my understanding, it's just a recommendation, not demanded, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, yeah, it's, it's just a recommendation, so we can, we can do better about that.
Have to oppose me for everything.
Maybe the terminology should be recommendation, not mandate.
It's, it's not mandate, we're, he's not, it's not. Yeah, no, no one's mandate, no one's mentioned mandate, no one's mandated. It's just, again, us to provide better service and information to the public so that they know what they're doing or so that they know when they're applying for a commissioner committee, that they're well aware of what you're dealing with, right? So that's, we can do better about providing better descriptions.
Yeah, and, and it is helpful for the commissioners, there's a lot of commissioners where it, it's, a lot of commissioners sometimes feel overwhelmed because some of the things they're discussing is, is complicated and very detailed and, you know, um, it's just helpful for them to, and then they're a final decision. So we'd be doing the commissioners a favor by, um, letting them know what they're walking into. You know, and, and it's just, I don't know, I just, that's what I feel, yeah. So that's something you just put in the, in the, the application? That's fine.
Yeah, we can put a packet.
Anything else from anybody?
Um, I do have, just whatever ends up getting approved, um, there was one change I wanted to make to the planning commission one, which was I added the words that they had to be a res, what's already in the statute is they have to be a resident. And I added, and a qualified elector, which is someone qualified to vote. And, uh, and I meant to remove that and did not, so I would request that you remove it unless you want to keep it.
But, so they have, would have to be a registered voter.
Right, I, I had added that one, it was based on another section that we're deleting as part of this proposed. It, it is in there for the, it's kind of like the old general rules. Anyway, all I'm saying is, the current status quo is that it's not in the planning commission, so I was gonna remove it. I didn't want to add that as a new requirement.
No, I think.
Unless the council wants it.
Yeah, I, I totally agree because, uh, when I first read the, um, the report, I kind of say, hey, what is, uh, um,
Qualifying.
Qualified, uh, you know, elector, so I I appreciate that you'd remove that.
As I recall from the, um, previous meeting, when we talk about boarding on commission and committees, we, as the council, uh, decided not to, uh, put any requirements on that. And that's the reason why, when I look at the, um, the resolution today, when I see qualified electors, I call, um, city managers and ask about it. And she said, it's just, you know, it's basically like, uh, for residents, which is already there, um, but also for the, uh, people who register to vote, and that's the only thing. That's why I'm okay with that, if the qualified elector, that you mean what you told me, then I have no problem with that, but if has, if it has another meaning than I do, because that's not the direction from the council from the previous meeting.
Do, do other commissions have that verbiage in there?
No, it was just in one section, um, when we added the nepotism section with, uh, two point six nine, which is recommended for deletion, um, the nepotism section I kept and I put that in a new general section, but there was language in there about being a qualified elector, which what that means is that that person is registered to vote. So it gives, uh, city clerk's office or whoever's dealing with processing their applications, they have to check to see if they're a resident, and they also need to check to see if they're registered. It's just another requirement they need to look at.
No, what would be the benefits? I think the benefit, the only thing I can think of would be that they would have some, some skin in the game as far as, you know, they're you know, making the decision like that, I don't know, but we, we, I think back, we had a, a case for the, um, senior, the, the, was it the senior?
That's what I was gonna interject.
Aging, the commission of aging, we had one case where we had a, a Canadian.
A resident, yeah, it was, so the person was a legal resident, but not eligible to vote. So that's why it, in this particular case, if the council wishes to retain, you know, that, you would, you ultimately exclude those who may be eligible to serve but not registered voters.
Yeah, I think we should take it out, I think it's fine, take it out.
So you, you recommended, you.
Registered voter and?
No.
So basically, uh, I have a question for, for the city attorney, you were the one who put it there and now you are recommended to remove it. Is that correct? Okay, so I, I, I'm okay with it.
My recommendation is remove it.
Okay, all right.
Um, all right, um, I, um, after, um, carefully read through the report, I, uh, I go into the make, uh, motion to approve the six point four with the condition, uh, we are going to exclude the two commissions, uh, which is, uh, cultural and arts and QT monuments , um, committee, uh, we're going to, um, I would like to put, uh, those two commi, uh, commissions, um, on the next, uh, agenda, a formal discussion.
Okay, so why don't we, since we have, um, we have two ordinances and one resolution here, why don't we take those one at a time, since it sounds like you want to make changes to, to A? That's the one that you were dealing with there. It sounds like you would like to introduce ordinance, uh, the, the very first ordinance listed as item A, but delete two point five, all references in that ordinance to two point five seven cultural arts, arts commission, is that correct?
Boy, five, seven, yes.
But basically eliminate any references in there to changes to the cultural arts commission. And there was another change related to.
Did you say QT?
QT isn't mentioned in any of the ordinances or the resolution, so that would probably need to be separately agendized like at another meeting.
Okay, so for this one, you only remove the cultural arts commission?
How come the? The, in a report, you didn't mention.
So the, so the Kwangtri Committee is not in the ordinance because it was adopted by minute order at the time.
Yeah, and just so, uh, again, because new council, you have the ability to take action in really three different ways, one is the most formal way, which is by ordinance. It requires two readings and most ordinances go into your code book, it's, it's the most formal passing of laws, ordinances, two readings, resolutions are slightly less formal, you can do it on one reading, it's, it's a formal document. And, you know, we can pass resolutions for all kinds of things. Or a minute order, which is what occurred in this case, which is the most informal way. We put something on the agenda to talk about something and you, I make a motion that we, you know, waive these fees. You know, and if that's approved, that's put into the minutes and it's a minute order, so we, I, my understanding is that this uh, committee was created by minute order and therefore, as long as it's properly agendized, we could take a minute order to change it.
So for this, for this, uh, six point four here, uh, according to him, the five, two point five seven is the one that he want to exclude from the approval of the first reading of the ordinance, is that correct?
And minute order QT, remove.
But, but that one's not really agendized, so we'd, if you want to do something with that, you'd have to put it on maybe for the next meeting.
So, um, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Nguyen, so you are, uh, motion to approve, um, section A with a removal of two point five seven at this time?
Right, yes.
I second that.
Yeah, and with the deletion of the qualified electors.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, um, we have, uh, motion in second, please call.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and that is to, um, I, that motion was made by, uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor uh, Nguyen, and that is to introduce an ordinance for first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of city of Westminster, California, amending the Westminster municipal code to add chapter two point four two, general rules and commission and committee appointments, amending chapters two point four four, planning commission, two point five six, parks and recreation commission, um, omitting this section for the sake of this, um, ordinance as it was originally prepared, uh, relating to two point five seven, and deleting chapter two point six nine to update rules governing city commissions and committees to read by title only and waiting for the reading. Um, and to amend it, uh, with the language, um, uh, deleting the language that says qualified elector and, uh, made reference in the planning commission section. Um, item B, item B is to introduce an ordinance.
We are to be, I should add mayor right now.
Yeah, just A.
Just A.
A.
Um, if we, before we vote on that, uh, let me clarify. So that mean two point five seven, we are talking about remove, uh, the items, uh, for cultural arts. That mean is removed, that come, uh, do, uh, is completely out or if, uh, the council need to bring?
That was, that was the motion to completely remove any reference.
Completely remove, okay.
Chapter two point.
All right, thank you. Call him off.
Um, council member Fan Nguyen?
Yes.
Fan, Fan West, excuse me, it's getting late. Um, council member Monzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho? Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yes.
Five, zero.
So we are moving to six point four B.
Motion to approve.
Second it? Roll call please.
And that motion was made by council member Monzo, seconded by Mayor Nguyen, and that is to introduce an ordinance for first reading entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of city of Westminster, California, amending title two, administration and personnel of the Westminster municipal code to add chapter two point six two, commission on aging, to read by title only and wait for the reading. Council member Fan West? Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Six point four C, I move to approve.
Second.
That motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by council member Monzo, and that is to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of city of Westminster, California, revising resolution number four, 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 seven, amending the structure of members for the youth committee. Council member Fan West?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Council member Ho? Vice Mayor Nguyen? Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero, Mayor.
So now it is, uh, the time for comments from the city council and agency members, uh, including AB one, two, three, four, report. Who wants to go first?
Um, I guess I'll go, um. So I say thank you staff again for all your hard work and thank you for working uh, so hard on the, um, Vanessa and all staff on the, uh, parade organization. I know that's a bit major, major task, so thank you for all your hard work on that. Um, again, I want to extend my, uh, condolences to our police chief for his loss, um, recent loss of his father, I know very difficult thing to go through. Um, and also I just want to, I know it's late, um, I know we, recently we had an accident where a little three-year-old girl lost her life in a tragic accident, um, recently. Um, I, I don't want to say her names, I don't know if her family would be, um, okay with that, it's just, you know, um, my, just the heart, you know, my heart goes out to their family if something, went through something so tragic. Yeah, I know what they're going through, um, I lost a sister, a three-year-old sister tragically and violently, like, like she died, um, was also hit by a vehicle. And it's not something you ever get over. Still, I mean, this is a long time ago, but I still think about her all the time. Um, so my heart goes out to her family. Um, just thank you, uh, council for, you know, everything you do here, so hopefully we can find a way to, as the mayor had made his, uh, speech at the beginning, uh, oral communication, um, find a way to, you know, work together and you know, find a way to be, you know, to think of being reasonable and compromise and, you know, always put in the community first, so hopefully we can get to that here, um, for the sake of our city, so. All right, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, uh, council members, Manzo, who's next?
Um, go ahead.
Please.
Go ahead, Ms. Kimberly. I would like to also express my condolences to our chief, uh, police chief for losing your dad, I know how it feels, I lost my dad a couple of years ago. And, um, so that is, um, really disheartening to, to know that. And um, so that is um, really disheartening to, to know that you went through the same thing and, but it, that, that is the circle of life and uh, it's inevitable. And so I share that grief with you and your family. Um, so many people to thank, I'm gonna, uh, just from the top of my head, and the person I forgot to thank was Commander Washida, also for um assisting um, our director of H, HR director, Jody Greiner, and um, our chief, uh, for recognizing what we need to do to um, recruit more trained, um, qualified, not just any police officers, but qualified police officers. And um, I'm looking really forward to your successful recruit, recruitments. And uh, next, I know that there's been a lot of work on staff, um, in community services. Uh, would that be community services? Yeah, I said it right, okay, it's late. So um, I just want to thank you for your hard work. And I was sitting here as we were talking about the new process and I realized what a chaos that must have been for all of you to have to handle uh, the amount of people who came, uh, probably waving their application in your face and screaming and yelling. And as I got a little taste of that, I think it was after Christmas breakfast, um, our, our, our staff breakfast, you remember? Um, I walked out there and I saw screaming ladies and they were yelling my name. And so I think in the media, the Vietnamese media, we're talking about the fake news that's been going on. Um, I thought what our city manager put out there in three different languages, um, and um, you know, I thought that helped, but you know, it certainly doesn't help. And I'd like to, uh, you know, if we want to progress and if we want to do good work, I think we should and we must start with ourselves, the people here, my peers, my colleagues, um, on the dais. So, um, you know, I just think we need to do better at communicating with our people, with our constituents as one. And I think it's really important that we respect our staff um, and let them do their work, work with them, and likewise, you need to work with us. So one thing I'd like to say is regarding the um, credit card, um, hundred dollar credit card. If once you're ready, please um, shoot us a text or an email, you know how to best get hold of us. Um, we'd like to wait for you and give you that head start. And I, as I heard all of us on the, from the dais saying that you decide on the date and the time, you let us know when, and we will help you, we should, we all should be assisting our staff. Let them take the, uh, the lead. And um, I, I think that it'll be more successful in this coming, um, I guess this will be our second try at it. And so we wanted to be a happy, um, you know, a happy occasion because they're getting the hundred dollars assistance for, for free. Um, so I think um, that should be helpful to many, but it could create, create a lot of chaos and it'll, if we don't do it, do things correctly, it'll leave a bad taste in people's mouth. They're gonna feel like we're biased, we're unfair, and so that's not the, you know, we don't want our city to be thought of that way negatively. So anyway, I just like to thank staff and just want to let you know that I acknowledge the chaos that you went through. I feel for you, so good luck to you a second time around. And um, I was gonna say, don't call me. But um, but anyway, we're, we're, I'm just joking, we will help you, help you any way you, you like. And um, so I think the next meeting we're going to, it's gonna resume after the Ted Parade, correct? So I'm really excited, um, this is gonna be our first Ted Parade help, or actually spearheaded by our city um, in a long time since twenty twelve or thirteen. Um, so I thank staff, I, and I thank um, those who are on the committee, ad hoc committee, and I'm gonna let you do your thing, I'm excited. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure the, the community excited also. Thank you and um, Happy New Year.
Thank you, and it's one o'clock, I just want to thank you all, the staff who work overtime, and we appreciate you guys doing, you know, being here with us. Uh, hopefully with this new agenda, our time will be reduced where it's respectful uh and whatnot, so I think it'll be good. And uh, I just want to say, you know, thank you, keep up the good work. And I will be there, uh, out there with you guys with the a hundred dollar gift cards. Uh, you can call on me to be there, I'll help you guys, uh, you know, that's our job. And, you know, it's their tax dollars anyway, so they deserve it, they should get it back. And I think it's important, more money in, in the people's taxpayers' pocket, uh, that's what I always will fight for. And then also earlier I mentioned, those who need to come and talk to me about your concerns as resident, to staff, to, you know, those who do business in our city, I welcome you. I welcome you to come to meet with me, you know, and I will set my time Wednesday from as early as three o'clock all the way up to our meeting, city council meeting. So I will be there for you guys if you need to talk to me about any issues. Thank you so much for your time, may God bless you guys and Happy New Year. Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three is the year for us moving our city forward, thank you.
Vice mayor Nguyen?
I just want to thank you. Just want to thank you staff, uh, for stay, um, you know, this late. And my, again, my condolences to Chief, Chief Aaron, yeah, there at me.
Alright, um, uh, I want to second with the city, uh, with the council. My condolences to the chief and the family, and um, our family prayers will be with you. Um, I want to make, I want to welcome the new council members. This is your second meeting and both meeting is ended at one o'clock. So now you have a taste of the city council. So hopefully with the, with the new uh ordinance that we put out, uh, we don't have to be here at one o'clock. Uh, third, I want to make sure that, uh, you know, I want to thank uh our staff. Again, I can't thank you enough for what you did during uh the last couple of weeks. Um, putting up the, even the Ted Parade event. Um, I'd like to ask the council, you know, is our job to promote this event and to make it successful? So any one of us, if we have a chance of go out there, talk to people, promote the, this event, I would strongly encourage that you do that, because the success is for all of us, for the city, and, and it's, it's gonna be a, 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 um, happy day for the community. Same thing for their a hundred dollars gifts they're get, uh, uh, to the uh seniors and veterans. It is public right off right now, okay? And until the, the, uh, you know, the staff is going to give us the date, I mean, it's a public uh, uh, already know about this. And I want not only staff that publicize this out to at large to the community, but any one of us can also publicize that it is out there. And then the date is whatever we have, we can wait to have the um, uh, the, have our staff to give us the, the, the definite date uh about that. Okay, up to date, of course, yeah, I think, I think that's a better way to do it, uh, you're right now, you are overwhelmed of, of, of many items there. So with that, I would like to thank everyone, uh, you know, staff and everyone in the community to come out and, and speak your mind and uh, voice your opinion and um, at this time here is a one, one oh five on the next day, which is on Thursday, right, Thursday? And I would like to adjourn this meeting and the next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven. Is it at seven or six, six P M? It should be at six P M. Because we have to, okay, at seven P M, meeting adjourned.